I'd like to call this the late city council work meeting to order on August the 17th at 5:34 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members CEO Mitchell, Dylan Delorco, Comer Soulek, and Mayor Proten Gearba. From city staff, we should add in Trump Manager Green, Clerk Royal, City Engineer Ford Ice, Wage Director, Treatment Superintendent Wygauski, Treasurer Bennett. Chief Hart will be absent tonight for both the work meeting and regular meeting, and Parks Director Scruggs, as well as our IT Director, Mr. Shaw. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended or as submitted unless there are amendments. Moved by CEO to approve, is that seconded by you, Mayor Proten Gearba?
Yes.
Very good. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Aye, stand with the motion carried unanimously. There are no absences, so we'll proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. And please note that we are discussing, we're having a follow-up discussion, excuse me, on the Sage Compensation Study. Clerk Royal, were there any comments submitted in advance of tonight's meeting?
We got one on our Zoom chat right now, but that's the only one I have for this portion of the meeting.
And did the person, did the individual who submitted their comment under Zoom chat wish to have the comment read during this public comment period?
Yes.
Okay, if you would read that.
This is from Chan Onmore, 325 North Lewis. This remarks, this marks the second meeting council is discussing the compensation study. For the second straight time, the council packet includes no supporting documentation. I asked for a copy of the study today, was told by Inter Manager Green that Sage Solutions considers this report to be proprietary in some way. I have several concerns. One, the public deserves to have some idea of what council is talking about. Two, public salaries are public record and council should not hide them. Three, it is disconcerting that city is choosing to hide a taxpayer-funded study. Lastly, this can be seen as a really poor reflection on the decision to hire Sage Solutions as your human resources partner and shows that perhaps this company doesn't understand the difference between public and private business. Lastly, please remember that several members of council asked former City Manager Campbell about this study repeatedly, anxiously waiting to see its contents. And now government, and it dropped off, so the next one goes, and now government is preventing anyone else from doing it. Please consider these points as you embark on a 90-minute discussion tonight. I'll be back at 7:00 PM for the regular meeting because there's not much point sitting in for this. That's it.
Were there any additional comments submitted this evening, Clerk Royal?
No, sir.
Very good. Then we'll proceed to the one discussion item of the evening, which is a follow-up on the Sage Compensation Report. I believe we have some guests from Sage with us, is that correct? Heidi, are you with us? Make sure you're unmuted.
I'm trying, thank you. Is there any other comments?
Oh, very good. Well, welcome, first and foremost. Second, Heidi, if you could reintroduce yourself and your team members that are present this evening, perhaps with a job title. Unless you think there are additional remarks that I should share this evening, I'll turn it over to you for some obligatory comments. And then we'll begin with a round of questions from the dais and from those participating remotely. Does that sound reasonable to you, Heidi?
Yes.
Very good.
My name is Sherry Reek, I'm the President of Sage Solution Group.
I'm the Chief Operating Officer.
And I am Sherry Reek Daniel, and I am CEO of Sage.
Very good. Well, thank you all for joining us again, and I would ask if you could be sure to speak a little bit louder and enunciate, that would be terrific. The floor is yours.
I got you. We're finding to figure out which way the law brings you today, to get into it, our apologies. But I'd like to start with, I know we talked a lot about the compensation study for the last meeting, and I wanted to start first before I kind of got into case to understanding the information that we're providing. Is there any questions that I might answer?
Very good. We'll do a round of questions, starting with the folks on dais, on the dais with me, and then we'll pivot to those three who are participating remotely. So I'll begin with Councilmember CEO. Mr. CEO, do you have any additional questions this evening?
No questions at this time.
Very good. Councilwoman Mitchell?
No, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Delorco?
Not at this time, Your Honor.
Mayor Proten Gearba? I believe you're muted, Dean.
No questions.
Okay. Our Councilwoman Dylan?
The only question I have, Heidi, is will you be discussing at this meeting a timeframe for implementation?
Yes, that is our plan.
Okay, that's all right.
We're just discussing to determine a contract.
I'm sorry, I do not view that.
Yes, we want to have a discussion about implementation contracts of that nature, absolutely.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Councilmember Comer Soulek?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Very good. Heidi, the floor is yours.
Okay, perfect. This is Sherry talking for this point. What I want to do is kind of walk us through, and I'll tell you what pages that I'm on, and some of the detailed information. One of the first pages that I want to make sure that everybody is kind of clear on is the grading. And the grading is on, I want to take you to page 139. Is everybody listening?
Yes.
And in this, and I was, you know, we did the positions for, and we looked at kind of, and we talked about this before quite a bit, is the principal factors in sorting out each position and determining which positions were somewhat similar based on the score. And with that, it helped us to group the positions within a particular grade. Does that grouping and that understanding of how to group within the pay grades, does that make sense to everybody? Or do we need to go a little bit more specific into that?
Appears that was understood by the group.
Perfect, okay. So then what I want to do is to take you to page 168, I have 217. Let me give us a guide to get there. So what we're showing on this is really what I consider somewhat of a difference in how position, when you look at, they each are, we're looking at the positions, minimum, midpoint, and maximum versus the grade, minimum, midpoint, and maximum. The grade, as we just looked at a few minutes ago, it really takes an entire group of employees, puts them in a grade, and establishes that everybody within this area, every position within there, is why you have the same minimum, midpoint, and maximum. So when you handle the library, you're taking a lot of tools, and you're combining that into one minimum, midpoint, and maximum. All right? And in some cases, it might push that position either in a better spot, or it might push it to a little bit less for a spot. Let me take some examples for you. When we look at, Abigail, our first person. Okay? When you look at the position minimum, the start rate for the position based on that position is a lifetime of one, for the position minimum would be 20,000. Okay? The midpoint would be 23, and the maximum would be 26. If you take it and you combine all by way of grade, the grade minimum would be 27,545, midpoint would be 31,676, and then a grade maximum would be 35,808. So there's a variance here of 137.72, which would, essentially, if you're going by the grade, it would push the minimum up by a substantial amount. Now, if you conversely take the very next one, Amy Blue, and if you look at her position, the minimum is fit at four, midpoint 65, maximum 75. But if you were to look at a more accurate of the grade, you have a minimum of 51,8, 59,6, and then 67,3. So her variance between the two is 91.69. So she would fall under or lower. So when you're looking at grading people, some will do, you know, better, some will do worse under that system. What you get is you get six to eight, there is the specific wage plan that you follow, and only six to eight. If you all had a position, then each position has its own minimum, midpoint, and maximum. Right? Everyone, how many needs them, which is more direct to the market analysis, which you aren't dealing with a lot of individual analysis, individual analogy based on, I don't want to say it right, but based on that specific position. Is there any question about what I'm saying to that? Does that make sense?
Appears that you're making sense.
Oh, wonderful. And so that's one of the areas where we're looking at implementation that we have to decide, does it make that sense to go as group to the position, for the specific scale or the grade specific scale? Again, some will be better, some will be worse, some will be the grade, and then the specific, the minimum, position, minimum, mid, and maximum. Is there a specific community staff for the position? Okay? We offer you them both because at each location in each city that we work with really has different opinions and thoughts on which way to go, in the most correct way, but it's a lot more detail-oriented, more cumbersome to manage, but definitely we're direct to that employee, impact to that employee, where they fall relative to others, and in a very specific position, the position itself analysis tends to be more pinpoint, more directed, easier to administer, tends to be the grade-based. And that will be a decision that we'll have to work out kind of pros and cons to determine specifically which way to go under this analysis. Okay? So what I want to do is to quote what I'm talking about a little bit, words play, and Okay? And we even look at 97 as well, 97 and 98, these are really good examples of kind of a higher-end position and a lower-end position to really evaluate. Let's take, let's, let's take it out of the chief for a minute here. There you go. So when we look at our market analysis summary, everybody can see where that's at, Heidi, do you have a little pointer on that?
Uh, okay.
Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't want to talk. No, no, I don't want to see it anymore. So when we look at our market analysis summary, which is right after the position summary, we can see that our market long mean is 113,000, our market size just to be 112, and our market size is that L and L adjusted is 112,30. So from there, what we can tell is how many annual increases, and we have a significant spread of 50%, which means when you look at the entire spread of the position from midpoint, 25% on one side, 25% on the other side of the point, 25 to the right, 25 to the left. And so how many periods would it take for this position to achieve midpoint, if you hired them at base minimum? You can see their minimum, midpoint, to the maximum on the total right-hand side. We got it listed here in an hourly rate and an annualized rate. So in this case, it would take nine. So it would take nine years to get to the minimum, if you hire at base minimum, 92. To reach the maximum, it would take 17. You have ultimately constant, we're assuming out of an average increase of about 3.3%. So that would take 17. And what you can see there is, if we were to use a cap ratio grid like we talked about in the last time, and we base it actually on the performance, if somebody was in the first point from the midpoint, like if it's a starting grade, and then they go into the .75, .85 range of the cap ratio, and then they were an exceptional performer as only the chief could be, then they would be out between a 6.6% increase for that first year. Okay? If they were that same exceptional performer, but they ever close to the top end of their range, then they would receive a 3.63%. Do you see how the columns look? Let's see into that.
Yes.
Now, if you could do this same thing, and instead of using exceptional satisfactory, unsatisfactory, you could use yours as a service, you could do a lot of things with that point on the grid, but if you were going to true performance and paying for performance, this is what it would look like. And in general, if...
With one exception, is that the percentages that we're talking about are examples. You would reconcile that to the situation.
Yes, I don't dispute the logic. Yeah, no, not at this point. So once I understood the logic, that would be adjusted. So if you look at kind of the story on the next page, which is page 98, this is a childcare The market long mean was 22, adjusted was 21,8, and the lag match, lead match lag was 21,8. And so if you can see, the spread for this position is a lot more narrow, you've got 15% on the other side of the midpoint, which means it's going to, they're going to go through the grid a lot faster, so it's only going to take six periods to get to the midpoint, and 11 to get to maximum. You may make this more narrow, or because there's only so much value in that position, and it's going to have all much flavor. So as you can see, where you've got your position, minimum, midpoint, and maximums, this would have to be a drastic minimum wage and other things like that, because this is just using a broad data graph. There's a minimum wage increase every year, so you'll see a little bit of the testing factors here. So at the end of the day, this person might see the same percentage increase, but it won't have material impact. But you can see how, again, based on how they're doing, you know, if they're an exceptional performer, they're close, and it would have taken them much more higher than if they were at close to top. And as you can see, unsatisfactory, in almost every situation, there needs zero increase. Is there any questions on that?
Heidi, I just have one quick question. Are these percentages based on annual performance evaluations?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, we can use that, we can use any factor to, to do this. We need to suggest that you raise it on performance, but if you were going to performance based system, or increases, and it was like a staff-based system, we can still use this as a scale.
So Heidi, what happens when you hit the maximum of the position? Maybe we have somebody right now that goes within one year and can hit the max. What's the approach for giving them a reset after that?
There's a, there's a couple of different ways you can handle that. One very popular way is with all red circling employee. The philosophy behind red circling is that there's only so much value in a position, and you don't want to continue to expand the maximum of that position because you're planning for the next person to end it. So you want to set the value at the value of what you need it to be. What you can do to, to show your appreciation, to show that the efforts that employee puts in are appreciated, is you can throw off some, that is the equivalent of some form of compensation. And they get lost some, but the base salary does not expand. You keep the integrity of the position intact.
Thank you. And if you think about that, is, you know, if you have a compensation study every year and you look at the market, it could be that two years online, that person don't go along or right on. And they can still go that way, so it's not in the communication.
And another thing that I'd like to use something on this for is like, the example of this childcare one. If you had a childcare two and three, I can show them, if they progress to the next level in their, in their career as childcare provider, then the scale would go up, and then they could get more raises. So it's also used as a tool to encourage people to go up to that next higher level of a position.
Councilwoman Dylan, did you have a question? You're muted.
I did, Mayor, first, I just wanted to ask, are we doing questions in real time, or are we doing questions at the end?
My preference is always to do them at the end, but I believe the presenters are providing an opportunity now for some questions based on their previous statements. So if you do have questions, feel free to ask them at this time.
Okay, thank you. First, I'm going to make a statement. When people that are at the dais are speaking, can they say who they are? Because from watching, unless you know their voice, you don't know who it is that's talking. And then my question's for Heidi. Heidi, is there an opportunity at any point, would you ever do a hybrid model, like using both position and grade for various aspects, or do you pick one or the other?
This is Sean. I think what you're, what you're saying is, is there a way to modify the fact, so some of the things that Sherry talked about at the beginning with a $7,000 swing at the minimum? You can, you can, yes, I guess there is a way to modify that. We could wait, we could figure out a way to objectively wait a position.
So like a grade 3A, B, C?
Yeah, we could have smaller bands.
And, yeah, and so you could have bands, like bands with advance to kind of bring that kind of world difference down, if you will. This is Sherry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
The other thing that you could do is, we could really expand the grades and kind of look at it by department, by position. So we could, we could do some, like, I would, instead of going to eight like we're at right now, seven, eight, I would go to like, double that even, or like I said, do a seven, A, B, C, so that it gives more relief in there to make the differences far less.
The short, this is Sean, the short answer is yes, again. One point that I think, I want to make sure that everybody understands is that when we say that there's a $7,000 difference between minimums, so it is going into, in the example that Sherry used, that $7,000 is a, is a day one ban. There, this, this is not suggesting that we make everybody write at day one. They would go into a system that uses the cap ratio grid that Sherry had explained, and over time they would catch up. But it's not, it's not a situation where the city needs to come up with an incredible amount of money to make people write based on where their position is.
If you were, this is Sherry again, sorry. I'll always start talking and then remember what I'm supposed to do, and why it works that way for me, but the, based on some of what I've seen, if it were me, your group is going to get, if you, if you group people by grade based on the substantial distance in market value of these positions, I think you're going to create as much complexity than if you just brought them by position, title, and each one had their own individual grade. Based on seeing the market value, that would be, my recommendation would be to worry less about grade and go straight to the position-specific minimum, midpoint, maximum. So that's what I would do, seeing the difference in some of the data that I deals in, and you could always kind of like grade similar position like white cards, one, two, and three. You know, you could have one wage plan and have it be increased, you know, you could have a AB and a C or something like that. But then otherwise, I would just stay with position-specific, see the data, and how it plays. Um, but then otherwise, I would just stay with position specific, see the data and how it plays out for you.
And just one last question, um, very quickly, is will, would you be able to see this type of a grid and understand it? So that there isn't a, well, why did she get this raise, but I only got this raise when we all got similar performance evaluations?
This is Sherry. Absolutely, and I encourage you to show it up.
Okay.
Because it's a really great tool to show how well if you, you know, if you get a promotion or you go for that next job offer, you know, this is the range, or by the way, you didn't get the same scores. And don't worry, you know, just worry about you, but if you would have scored out in exceptional versus the average, then you, you would have seen this type of raise. So let's talk about what you can focus on for next year so you can get that. It's a really great tool for it, and it's an objective tool.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions though?
Uh, this is Jim. I have one more question. When we had our last discussion about this report and you made the claim or assessment that there were several positions in which the city is lagging, were you making that assessment based on position or grade?
Both, it's, it's both. Both. And that's how, what I need to really happen next is that analysis by each, uh, position, by each person. If you decide to go with, um, the position, um, the analysis by position and the plan by position, then we will go through and identify where everybody sits. Um, if you decide to go by grade, then we will do that analysis by grade.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. When you mentioned doing the leveling of each position, my concern is that you, you start to begin a loop of the positions and then it becomes difficult to, um, manage. It's almost like creating another position and then I have another level, another level, another level. Um, where would you recommend that we probably focus that on? I wouldn't want to have a, you know, like a column one, two, and three if that wasn't out of structure. Because then it just basically allows the individual to continue getting an increase instead of following the job skills, I guess I would say, for the position.
You're right. I understand exactly where you're coming from. Some of your positions actually have a one or a two or a three. So you would probably want to, um, either sit it with that or combine that into this one position. And there's possibly, um, a lot of times what I look at is what's the value or premium on a particular scale? Um, and you stick within that same position. If you were going to attempt to, um, like, uh, hire a, if you will, and sit it with your grades, I might do some subgrading in there where if it were a seasonal position, they might get a subgrade. I wouldn't use it to go up per se and to start creating more and more levels. I would actually have an agreement, um, as to what they are right during this process, not the ability to just add on and create new so that you can continue to pay people. That would, you might as not do this exercise.
Got it, thank you.
Any additional questions from the dais or from those council members participating remotely? Okay, ladies, gentlemen, you can continue.
So let's talk about next steps going forward. This is Sherry, yeah, sorry. I'm going to keep doing that. I need to sign right there. Um, so the, the first thing that we have to do is to assess whether or not you want to move forward with the grades and then the wage plan within grades, or if you want to have a wage plan by position. That's a very important step. That, that needs to be taken first.
Would you understand that we can, we can do the hybrid and expand the number of grades?
However, I still recommend that we go straight by position based on just, just the, you know, amount of complexity that you could add to it. And your most direct position to position is by, um, actual title position. So the work rates, your, your, um, your roles are very diverse within your grades. And the market value of them is very diverse.
Heidi, I have a question, or Sherry asked, sorry, um, just very quickly. If, so are you setting position the only time that you take into account, you know, say education? Is that at the time of hiring? So if a, if a, if an employee were to get, say, a master's degree midway through, would you change their salary based on this?
So usually what I recommend that individuals do, the answer is, you guys know what makes you stop. And let me explain why. This is Sherry's stuff. So every time you hire, particularly for, never like a white card or something like that, let's take that. Put a major position within your, your group. You should do, you should go back to that job description and relook at it and say, is this really what we're going to be looking for? Is this how we're going to replace this position? Because you've got your knowledge, skills and abilities and core requirements and essential functions all based on that time in life and, you know, a hundred years ago. And the knowledge of the opportunity to replace it, you might hold value on a master's degree or you, or require it, or you might hold more value on warriors experience. And so you should always go back to that job description, look at it. If you change anything, or even for average rather, not you should change anything. If it's been more than six months, you should take that description in the zoo or not, back to market and take a look at it. Um, so that would be an important thing. Now with certain positions, you might say a master's degree holds a lot more value to your organization than a bachelor's degree. And if those are the cases, then you might put a value on that to start with. And I recommend that you do that upfront. If you do hold, let me give you an example. So I'm a nurse, right? And our N could have a two-year, a bachelor's degree and a master's degree. But the value of that to a hospital, it is extremely varied because they are, when you get, um, JPO accredited, you have to have X number of your nurses within a certain higher level advanced degrees. So you can't have all just, uh, associate level degree nurses. So you'll place a higher value on your bachelor's and even higher value on your master's. That is where it's directly related. A degree is directly related to compensation. And if you have positions where a degree is directly related, warriors of service or a certificate, the compensation, we should make those known and we should write those right within the wage plan. So that people understand that right from the beginning. And that way you can hire to that grid. And so when you're looking at it, you know, you might put $2,500 of that on, you know, five plus years of experience. But under five might be, you know, the straight minimum. You can work towards any one of those. Um, if it's, in my opinion, the most important thing is if any one of those factors holds value to the organization, then it should be known and it should be written into the wage plan. It is what you're not changing on the spot.
Not necessarily, if I'm in a position that requires a bachelor's degree and I decide to go back to school and get a master's degree, that doesn't mean you have to honor a master's degree because it wasn't something that the position acquired or that this, this city permitted you honor. So it, it, it's, just because somebody gets it doesn't mean that there's compensation.
But if you, but I'm going to, because we're going to, this is Sherry, I'm going to laugh at each other for a minute here. But if, say for example, within your organization, you wanted to upgrade the skill level of your employees, you could actually incentivize that degree, right? And you could say to your employees that, you know, if you get this degree, you could, you know, you could either earn this comp or it does take it until level one or two or three, depending on which way you're going. Um, and so you could do that, but you would have, you would want to write that in at advance. The worst thing that you can do in a wage plan is to decide you wanted, after you find the standard rate that you find is really, really great, and then you want to justify how you're going to get that minimum.
I appreciate that, that response, um, because I know that the city does put, um, high level of pride in its continuing educational opportunities, certifications for all employees. And so I just wanted to clarify if that is a factor at some point in how you, how you make it a factor, if that's the direction which you want to go.
Absolutely, and it's very doable just to be an advance. Otherwise, it will never come out fair and consistent. And that's where you run into trouble.
Thank you very much.
If that is the case, we should actually put those straight into those plans if there's objectives. You should write them right in.
Sherry, Heidi, we're, uh, we're about at the midpoint of the work meeting. We're about quarter after. What I'd like to do, if you're amenable to this, is continue on with your presentation. If we can try and wrap it up in the next 10 minutes and then we'll do a more, uh, significant thorough round of questioning with all of my council colleagues, where there'll be allocated at least five minutes to share questions, concerns, and hopefully we can begin to develop consensus on the grade position question that you just raised, or whether we want to adopt a, a hybrid approach as a third option. So with that, the floor is yours.
Okay. And so the next, once we develop that, we run all of, so the hybrid versus, this is Sherry again, the hybrid versus the live position. Then we will run, we will take a understanding of what your budget is. That's going to be an important piece. And then another piece, uh, would be to, um, then, um, we'll look at all of the employees relative to that against the performance matrix to determine if anybody is, um, you know, where they fall within the wage plan based on their years of service. So then we would know which employees are too far above grid, too far under grid. And then at that point, we can make, uh, a recommendation of how to resolve that. Right? Now, in addition to that, we got, so we have the job description, right? And if you decide you want to run a performance-based A plan or wage plan, then what we would have to do is determine what that looks like. I know that, um, there was one that was, um, being utilized over the past couple of years, but it doesn't really have numbers. Um, it, it's not an easy system to adopt for this. And so I believe the next step would be to determine what the appropriate performance evaluation system would be. And at that point, we would train the supervisors on administrative evaluation system. We would then discuss how to utilize the cap ratio over it. And then we would, um, implement, uh, first by making certain that all employees understood prior to, um, actually a few million dollars, so they understand what the new system looks like. And so each one should have an individual, there could be some aggregate group discussion, but each one should have an individual discussion on where they fall within the system and how it impacts them individually. So each employee understands what it takes, you know, that they can get this kind of raise as their great employee and they do really well on their performance review. Uh, or if they're red circled, then, you know, the plan is to make to determine how to appropriately acknowledge their great compensation. So that's what setup I said, and we could put this in an actual written, um, project plan, if you will, with, uh, noted timelines for you, so that we all have kind of targets to hit. Hi, sorry. And so with that, we are, we conclude our, our, of the presentation.
Very good. Thank you for that. Uh, let's see here. We've got, uh, we've got about 40 minutes. So we'll do one initial round of questions and probably have time for at least a second. Uh, we'll begin with five minutes per council member. Uh, I do have one quick question or observation, rather. Uh, I think it should be directed to Heidi. My apologies. It's Mayor Marl speaking, if, if you're not familiar with the voice. Um, Heidi, did you, uh, did you and your colleagues catch the, uh, the comments that were made by the local editor of the Celine Post during the public comment period this evening?
Uh, you mean in the chat?
Yes.
Yes, we heard that.
Okay. So my question is, um, is there any way to have staff or your associates redact certain information so that the analysis could be made available to the public?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, I see. Unless there's objection from my six colleagues, I think we should proceed in that, in that direction. Um, try to move expeditiously to get those redactions made so that can be released to the press and to anyone in the community who would like to review the document. Okay, thank you, Heidi. Uh, with that, we'll start with questions and we'll begin at the dais. And I'm going to start to my left with council member CO. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Yara. So this system sounds like it could be fairly complex. Are, do you provide training at the point that we implement a system like that? So such that every grading supervisor is aware of how it works? So if they're questioned by an individual employee, they're not making some kind of a, of an improper statement in response that could then be used against the system, if you will?
This is Sherry. Absolutely. Each actual individual position or grade will have its own sheet. So when they're sitting with the employee, they pull out that sheet for the position and can show the data relevant right to that. And we will train them very specifically on that.
And coos to the employees as well.
Yes, we train employees.
If, we, we hope this to be a completely transparent, uh, process and provide the employees with training and an opportunity to question, for questions and answers so they have a sound understanding of where we're holding the place.
Okay.
And one other thing, this is Sherry, I'm sorry to interrupt. The other nice thing is you have a stage individual there who can actually sit in on the first couple individual meetings with the employees to make sure that it goes smoothly. So they can be side by side with them right from the beginning.
Okay, thank you. The, the last question I have is, a plan like this, uh, as thorough as it is, becomes stated after a while. Is there any time which you recommend that you come back and do a tune-up of what, what's in place?
This is Sherry. This is Sheri. I recommend annual tune-ups, but they go much faster because all of the system is already embraced. It's just a quick review to determine if the job descriptions have changed, and then a quick look at the market.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Co., Councilwoman Mitchell, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Heidi, Sheri, and Sean. I'm really fond of this because it takes, it, it's just purely data-based. I appreciate that you're talking about training supervisors to use this grid, that you will have an evaluation system that they're also trained on. I think this is exactly what the city needs. I guess I want to go back to, as far as questions, someone asked, what happens if an employee reaches a maximum, reaches the ceiling? And your answer was, well, we could do red circle, there's only so much we can do there. And there was talk of, consider giving a lump sum. And so, is that accounting-wise, is that considered a stipend? Is it a bonus? What?
It is typically looked at as a one-time lump sum wage bonus.
Okay.
From an accounting standpoint.
I'm sorry, what was that?
From an accounting standpoint, it's usually a one-time lump sum.
Okay.
Adjust.
I, I especially like that piece where employees have access to this information, the public has access to the information, and if an employee has a question of, you know, this person, A, got more than I did at B, you can say, well, you know, because this is merit-based, you could bring your performance up to exceptional, and here's how. I think that's just a really great way to, to promote people and to have folks take responsibility. I don't have a whole lot of questions, I, I feel like you've just described the process really well. At this point, I'm thinking about the position basis, but I'm open to what others are saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Delorko, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Marl. I, I just wanna follow up a little bit on, on what Councilwoman Mitchell was saying about the, the red circling and the lump sum payments. When Mayor Protem Geerba asked the question, the first thing that came to my mind about how to handle that situation would be promotion or job reclassification. And if the job descriptions are detailed enough and are stratified appropriately, wouldn't that be an option as well, to, to move somebody up into the next level of their, of their pay grade?
So, usually, the next level, this is Sheri talking, of a pay grade has something to do with a next level of competence or capability, like a, you know, if one is lowest and three is the highest, three is a, like a lead or supervisor, one might be that you gotta, or two might be that you got a certification. And so, what I typically see is that you stay within that, that sub-level, you know, until you reach that level of competency. And it really isn't just about pay or about the duties.
Okay, so, so if someone is performing what is deemed exceptional, and they're, they're putting in 100% day in, day out, there has to be an opportunity for them to, to move up the ladder in some way, right?
Okay, this is Sheri, yes. So, what you would do is you might talk to them about if you have to a reimbursement and having them gain that level of experience.
Okay.
Another thing might be other, if you change that job description and you added more duties and took it back out to market, if they were doing such an exceptional job, it, you know, it might be that the job is changed, so that would be another way to potentially achieve that. And one of the things that I sometimes recommend is, some people would do a flat across more, like, and this is not part of your from a budgeting standpoint, we just gotta work our way through it, is if you can actually make your lump sum bonus, you know, how can they get consistent with their score or their, you know, you can line it up just like you're doing this, and you do the, for those that are red circled, you can actually give them amount of lump sum bonus based on their performance.
And this is Sean. The other thing, what I, what I think I'm hearing is, if somebody maxes out, where, where would they go as hard as a career is concerned, or how can they progress in the city?
Right, how do we retain that talent is what I'm concerned about, retention. Are you guys having trouble hearing me?
Did you say retention or pension?
Retention, talent retention.
One, one strategy that could be employed, and I'm sorry that we're, we're asking if you hear yourself, we're having a hard time.
No, it's okay, it was a problem last time, too. I just wanna try to be as clear as I can so everyone can hear me.
Well, the strategy you could use is the, the idea of career progression, and you can, you can map out how one position, if they reach a certain topic, goes to another position, if they reach a certain topic, goes to another position. And you can, you can have these career paths that people might choose to take, and you'd have the competencies, the skills, and the education that could define how they could get to that next up.
Okay.
And that could keep people moving through the, through the grades, through the positions nicely for an entire career.
What, in your assessment of our municipality, did you feel that our job descriptions are structured in such a way, or is there much work to be done there?
We'd probably have to look at just a little one and see where, where there's areas, you know, with your assistance, what areas would lend themselves well to that. It would certainly be something you have to look at and then adjust job descriptions if we did see sort of steps within, within a position that could, that could do that. But we, we would have to talk to some folks in the city and see how we do that.
Okay. My last question focuses on trying to get a firmer handle on the position versus the grade question. So, my understanding of the position category is that these are tracking to the market analysis research you guys did comparing us to other municipalities, is that correct?
Yes.
So, can you further break down for my identification what the raw mean versus the market size adjusted mean versus the market size MML, LML adjusted is, because those numbers seem to be very similar?
They, they are.
So, it's because, if you, if you look at, do you guys still have page one, ninety-seven or ninety-eight open?
Yes.
The market size adjusted mean and market size LML adjusted are the same for the position because we did not make any changes to the position lag percentage, it's 1.0. So, if you look at any, any one of those positions on those pages, under the position-based compensation recommendations, it's the third line now, the position LML is 1.0. We made no assertions on any of those positions that there was something different about that job or something that would cause us to want to leave or to lag. So, if we look at grades, if we look at positions and decided, you know, we're never gonna be able to hire in this type of position right next to an harbor without leading mark, and then we can look at that position and say maybe it's a 1.05, maybe 1.10, then you'll see that market LML number different, and then the mid, the midpoint, and max will all change.
So, then, am I to understand that nowhere in the report are the, the medians reflected as opposed to the means, or is it sheerly average?
They're averages.
Is there a, a quick and easy way to get this converted into medians? Cause I, I personally find those numbers more meaningful.
Um, no, not that quick and easy, but doable.
If you add back to six to eight points, the median could be, you could have a, have a pretty wide swing of the median. I'd love to talk that out with you, but I think you, I think even an average gets too close to reality of the position.
It's, it's worthy of a conversation. I, I feel like the averages can be biased in one direction based on a municipality that has enormous amounts of resources to pay high salaries and other municipalities that can't, can't perform on that level, and a median captures the middle, what, what the, the, the top of the bell curve is.
Two, two things at that point. One is, I can, I can look, I can see exactly what it would take to, because we've, we've never been asked that question before, I gotta go there deep into the work and figure out how to go median instead of mean. It might be, and it might be relatively easy, it might not, I'm not sure, I could get back to that.
Okay.
The second thing is, the market size adjustment is designed to correct the arbers of the world, and that's why there's, that's why there's a difference between the raw and, and the size of the adjustment. We use the general fund and, and other economics, demographics for particular comparison, and we factor that number to try to eliminate comparing select to New York City.
Right.
So, there is that, there is that in there. We did, we do pay defer to the fact that there are differences, and we had a, we had a comparable difference. I'll, I'll look to see what we can do with the median.
We didn't actually, nobody ever got exercise. That'll be funded directly.
Well, thank you.
That was the statistic.
Thank you, Councilmember Delorko. Moving on to those who are participating remotely, Mr. Geerba, Mayor Protem Geerba, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand Mr. Delorko's approach because we both worked at the same unit, and we did use median because of that concern of having those outliers that could distribute through an average, you'd cause a problem. But understanding that you've adjusted for those large ones is helpful, because I think that really is the biggest concern, is having someone in a certain position, or if you have three or four people and one is being paid significantly out of the range, and then you're trying to fix it all, you can get misleading data.
There are also formulas to address median outliers as well, so we can, we can look at that as well.
Yeah, and I, we, we used to have to pay back and forth on the whole thing about that. I appreciate this because I look at the Pro Show, we looked at grades and in my previous positions and things, we've always addressed it through position, or we've looked at job families. And in this situation, I would support the position approach, because generally, all of employees look at their own titles, they compare themselves to others, and when we start looking at that, I'd rather have that kind of information available to them than to focus on, well, you fall within a pay grade and then start comparing, well, why does somebody make more money than I in their pay grade? And I know how you balance that out. So, you're recommending that we would have just seven pay grades at this point? Looking at page seventy-five of the survey?
So, currently, we have seven pay grades. And if we went with, I assume the question relates to, if we went with purely position-based analysis and not looking at, at the grades to, to address each different position, you know, the, the grades would, would be fine as they are, because I know there are thoughts on, I mean, they, they, the grades were created based on comp factors, and so they, they all hung together appropriately, so if we go to the position, now we're just gonna look at position-specific, sort of irrespective of the grade at that point.
The, the levels in the details of implementation to make sure that the system is, is running the way it should and it's managed the way it should, and we're certainly not gonna let it go poorly. We'll, we'll set it up, it's easier with seven, seven grades. If it goes to twenty or twenty-five, we've just gotta make sure that it's organized and it's, it's trained and, and people understand it, and it's set up to succeed in that fit.
Right, and part of my concern is that, I don't know if we would change this without having you all review it first or whatever, I don't wanna see a growth, from my perspective, of the number of pay grades and the number of other issues as we move ahead. So, if we are annually reviewing it, then we would basically have a clean approach so that it doesn't grow into a uncontrollable matter, cause I, I've seen this, I've seen how all of a sudden there'll be revisions done on it, and it just grows in terms of titles, and it grows in terms of pay grades, and it's an attempt to try and make it, you know, achieve something that really isn't what, I think management should be trying to achieve. So, your approach that you mentioned, in terms of like job qualifications and whether or not you have certain positions, and whatever is required that position needs to happen at the beginning, I support that, and that's it. The only other question I had is, in terms of implementing this and creating a project plan and annual review, is that part of what we would continue to do right now with Heidi, or are these additional costs or expenses that we'd have to incur?
That piece would probably fall under the current agreement we have with the city, the new agreement. So, that's something that I would work on, that's something that Heather would work on?
Excellent.
We'll look at the less working.
Anything further, Mr. Geerba?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Councilwoman Dillon, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I think Mr. Geerba hit on a good point that I had, and so I appreciate that, and I'll move on. I've got a couple of just things I wanted to make mention of. Performance reviews, those will now be standardized across the board?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, everything is announced at the comparison as far as the rating system?
Yeah, I, I can elaborate a little bit to, to give you an idea of how our approach is to, at least to start, obviously, gonna work with folks in the city. But one of the key things that when we implement a system like we have, where it's clearly numeric, it's something that ties to compensation, it's, it's some, it's a system that we have to manage, and there has to be a loss of the system. Now, with a loss of the system, that's something we all have to figure out and decide. Usually, it's, it's in HR, sometimes there's somebody else above that that's also assisting with that process. And when I say a loss of the system, it has to be somebody who understands and sees every app, excuse me, every evaluation that comes in, and then the reason we do that is because, you know, you have a number of different managers, and I actually work under the systems that we're, we're going to, to talk with you next time. And it only takes one or two managers to start elevating scores for a couple of departments that then make other departments, it's less fair for those other departments. So, what we're really looking for is first scope creep, we don't want some folks just, you know, continually raising and raising and raising the numbers without being able to justify why they gave somebody a four versus a three, why they gave somebody a four and a half. So, what, what we look for is to ensure that if you give somebody a score that's beyond the expectation, so let's use the scale that we have, where we had one was unsatisfied, three, five was exceptional, three would be where we expect an employee, and that means as their, as that objective or that task was laid out in their evaluation, if they did everything... objective or that task was laid out in their evaluation, if they did everything we asked them to do, they got a three because that was meeting what you wanted them to do. If I'm a manager and I'm going to rate something and I think they did better than a three, I can't just hand a score of four and do nothing with that. I have to explain, I have to justify why I gave the employee that four. Likewise, if I gave them a two because I didn't think they were meeting an expectation, A, I'd rather not be delivering that during the evaluation. I should have had a discussion with that employee before we get to the point where I'm giving them the two in the evaluation. So the boss of the system is kind of looking at the scores coming in, you know, if a bunch of fours, a bunch of three and a halves come through and there's no explanation, I'm kicking it right back because I need to see that justification. So the manager either has to modify their score because they didn't have the justification for getting higher score, or they have, you know, clearly just filed the things that the person did to get the higher score. So if it really is valuable, have somebody looking at that. And, you know, if it's in HR or it typically goes, you know, you also know the employees that are, that have perhaps had some performance issues. And if somebody gets a score of four in an area where they've had a known performance issue in the last four months, it's going to be really hard to justify a four at that point. So you just want somebody that's got the finger on the ball, that's helping to keep the entire system prepared.
As you said, it's typically a human resource function and you break it out today until there is, or if there is, somebody in the city that does that. The person we have placed there, a manager, certainly serves that function to ensure there's objectivity involved with the score.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So moving on, just so, to talk about equality, the city's got three unions and then it has, in addition to its non-union employees. How do we find some sort of equality across the board that way? Because your union employees are not going to have the same benchmarks that your non-unions are. And so how does an organization find that out? Because if we were to say, set a cap of whatever percentage as, you know, a contract increase, salary increase for union employees, those could be three different numbers based on the three unions. And then you have your non-union people. I'm trying to find out how we figure out to eliminate some of that, that sort of strife between margins. Is that possible?
This is Sherry. This is in the cloud a little bit. Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. One of the things to keep in mind is that at the end of the day, the budget is the budget and the percent that fall into the grid will be based on working to maintain that budget. So whereas in the union, everybody gets across the board, whatever is, 3%, 2%, 50%, you know, whatever your step is, whatever your percent is. Essentially, what you're selling in a non-union setting is that you will not get, everybody will not get the same raise, you will get a raise based on your performance. You're going to have some that don't like that because they're normally poor performers. They're usually your complainers to the end. And those that really like that will, you know, will say, this is great. I know how, you know, I know that my contribution will maintain something. And so it's never going to be, you're never going to please everybody. But what you usually please in a system like this, to be honest, is you please your strong performers. And your laggards usually end up, you know, either, you know, just continuing to complain about it or doing something to make more money in the system. And the difference between the union and the non-union, at the end of the day, because I know in the union they have staffs as well, right? At the end of the day, it's still bits within the larger. So there's still a constraint on it. It's still not going to go past that.
Thank you very much for that. And I know I'm running out of time, so I guess my next question is, what is your approach to implementation as far as like the timeframe? Do you work sort of with the numbers and figure out, okay, you know, this group is severely behind, so we should start with them and start stepping them up? Do you look at marginalized groups? Is it, I mean, is there a process to it?
It's really, it's really your preference. If there is a, if we identify a group of people where there needs to be an equity adjustment, we really do it simultaneously, honestly. It's not even how it's really implemented. We can do it all at the same time.
So this is Sherry. From my opinion, I like to kind of hold it all at once, you know? Because otherwise the other groups get fancy and people around realize that and other stories come out and it's not the story that you want to tell. So I like to do it all at once. We typically take what you're going to, you know, what your deadline is and when you have your budget problems in, right? And then we work out a plan over there. So with budget problems and with, you know, evaluations, it's a completely problem to do, we work timelines in between those two parameters and then we develop the project plan between the two.
Thank you very much. I'm sure I'm out of time.
Sorry about that. We're well over time, but appreciate your questions. I'll transition now to Councilmember Comer Sulaq, he has five minutes.
All right, thank you. So I will, I will keep it, I will keep it quick. So when we were talking about subtotals for the job descriptions and steps within the positions, can you elaborate on that a little bit? And I forget if that was Sean or Sherry discussing that?
What we're talking about with starters and the grades is basically making more grades so you don't have, you don't have as much of a disparity with the starting wages or the midpoint wages. So it's, you're grouping, the more grades you put in, the more you can recruit people and so more jobs and so more salaries. And the far extreme of that is if you put in, is by position. Because if you just keep on adding grade, 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 you're getting close to the number of positions along the number of grades. So there's a point where it just actually makes physical position. If you add, if you continue to add more and more grades.
Okay. All right. And I'm in agreement with Mr. Delorko and Mr. Girba with liking, I'd like to see the medians. I think that would be, that would be informative. And then we can also analyze what that, what the difference is with the, you know, with the averages and maybe that would, those could be some good data points for us, you know, with our, with our staff and getting, getting to a good, stable, fair and transparent point. Otherwise, I think everything has been described quite well. Thank you for all your work on this and all the questions by previous council members. So that's all that I have right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Comer Sulaq. We have just a few moments, but I want to jump back to a question that was initially proposed by Sherry and it's on the whole grades versus position question. There's also, as I articulated earlier, a third option, which would be a hybrid approach. I believe from the notes that I was taking during the course of the meeting, I heard from two councilmembers on that question, Mitchell and Girba, indicating a preference for the, for utilizing positions as opposed to grades. I also favor that approach, which is the recommendation of Sage. Mr. Seal, do you have a sentiment on that, that particular question?
I don't have any really strong feeling. Although position is certainly, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Mr. Delorko?
I think the position approach makes the most sense.
Okay. Mr. Girba, I heard from you. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. I would agree with the position as Mr. Girba had indicated. I think it's clearer and cleaner for employees to understand versus grade. So that would be my preference.
Very good. And Councilmember Comer Sulaq?
I also feel that positions, by position approach is, is more clear and easy, easy to understand and the fact that we can make, that's also based on, you know, market analysis in short positions.
Very good. So Heidi, Sean, Sherry, I believe you have consensus on that particular point. Are you clear?
Very clear.
Very good. What I'd like to do is this, I don't know that another work meeting is necessary, but I do want to talk a little bit more about implementation. And so my thought is that this would be added as a discussion item at our next meeting on September the 14th. Of course, in the meantime, if question members have, councilmembers have questions or concerns or would like further analysis on any of the points enumerated in the analysis, feel free to connect directly with Intro City Manager Green. Heidi, jumping back real quick to the question I proposed during our final round of questioning, because I should probably double back with the editor of the Celine Post. How long do you think it will take to redact certain sections of the compensation study so that we could get that, to get the report disseminated to the public and to our media contacts?
Yeah, those are the ground, I don't think we're going to have to redact.
We're going to do a little bit of internal deliberation, but today is Monday, so following me.
If I indicated to him sometime early next week, do you think that's reasonable?
Yes, it is.
Okay, very good. Are there any other pressing questions before we adjourn this work meeting this evening? Heidi, Sean, Sherry, thank you for your time and more importantly, thank you for your work on this. We look forward to talking to you again very soon. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
You have the line now. Okay, friends, referring back to our agenda, unless there's anything else that a councilman would like to bring forward this evening, then Sherry would entertain a motion to adjourn this work meeting at 6:57 PM. Moved by Mitchell, seconded by Girba. All those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. This work meeting is adjourned and we will convene into regular session promptly at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this Clink City Council a meeting to order. If you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present from City Council this evening, I myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmembers Seal, Mitchell, Dillon, Delorko, Comer Sulaq, and Mayor Pretend Girba. From City staff, if you please indicate your presence when I call your name, that would be greatly appreciated. Court Royal, please unmute yourself. Waste Water Superintendent Wajowski, not present currently. Treasure Bennett, make sure you're unmuted. Intro City Manager Green.
Green is here.
Police Chief Hart will be absent this evening. Parks and Rec Director Schruggs?
Here.
And I believe Attorney Swets is with us tonight, is that correct?
Yes, I'm here.
Very good. Thank you, Roger. Am I missing any other staff members? City Engineer Fordyce, are you present?
Here.
Very good. Am I missing any other department heads? The rest of you who are with us this evening in person, if you please sign in in the back, that would be greatly appreciated. There is a, we now proceed to approval of the agenda. I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, unless there are amendments. Moved by Seal to approve as submitted, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have the motion carried unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that. I will reiterate, I'll be following the same protocol that I followed at our last meeting. So I will not be calling on individuals, I won't be calling on members individually, either at the deus or those participating remotely. If you have a question or comment when we get to an action item, please raise your hand and the chair will call on you. At this time, we proceed to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his name and address for the record. Court Royal, we're going to begin with comments from those attending in person. This does provide an opportunity for anybody who's participating remotely to type in a question or comment under the chat icon at the bottom of the screen and please indicate that you would like your comment or question read during one of the two public comment periods this evening. The first public comment period is limited to agenda items. The second public comment period, at the end of our meeting, you can address any municipal issue that you appear to address. So with that, we begin with those present in the chambers this evening, please.
Mary Hess, this is in regard, I noticed the DPW is on, or the sewer plant is on the agenda. And this is regarding the fence that is around the sewer plant and especially behind Mrs. Armbruster's property. This spring, I got to see the back fence and there were all kinds of limbs and all kinds of debris on the fence, that is the city's fence. And on the right, there's greenery. I saw it again about two weeks ago. In fact, it was talked about cleaning it up because it's our fence. And last, maybe two weeks ago, I saw it again and it's a mess. There is greenery over all the fence, probably 12 feet high. It has become, it may become... It has become, it may become, a habitat for varmints. In fact, I think I saw a lady on Facebook, she has two pets, or two squirrels in her back, or two skunks. So it really should be cleaned up. There is no way that I or any of you would have that at the back of your lot. It is ours. I know we talked, I think the council talked about it about four months ago. I don't know what the issue is with the fence, that's not my issue, but it needs to be cleaned up. Thank you. And hopefully, you'll address that at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any additional citizen comments among individuals attending in person tonight? The record will reflect, there are none. Clerk Royal, were there any emails or comments submitted in advance of tonight's meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. And were there any comments typed in this evening when we convened, when we convened our meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. Then the record will reflect, we have one citizen comment from Mary Hess regarding the wastewater treatment plant, specifically the fence at the rear of Ms. Armbruster's property. We'll proceed now to the one presentation of the evening, which is a capital improvement plan. I believe Treasure Bennett is going to be taking the lead on this, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Very good. The floor is yours, if you want to spend about five minutes providing an overview for the benefit of council and the community.
Okay, perfect. So I'm going to transition over here and share my screen, but in the meantime, while I'm getting that figured out, I want to just quickly go over how this compensation plan is, works. So as you may remember, I'm going to find my information here. As you may remember, the compensation plan is a, I can't get my information here. The compensation plan is a six-year study that is available on our website, and you can go and click on it. The six-year study gives us an opportunity to take all of our projects, so a great example of what this document is for is our street projects. So we take our street projects, and we line out when the funds, when we feel the need is there, and then we lay out the funds. Typically, we do one year of engineering and design work, and then the next year, we follow it up. So it gives us the plan, and how they're projected, and to get our money aligned with our needs, and then we also disclose, in the CIP, we also disclose the, where the funds are coming from, and how that, I have my, where the funds come from, and how we can align grants and stuff for those projects. So if you can be one minute, I'm struggling to verify where to share my screen. I thought I did the document a little bit this season, I guess it didn't just long. Well, I don't want to take too much more of your time, so basically, if there are certain questions or anything, the, here we go, I have it down there, and I'm sorry about that, people, we're so worried about getting my information out there. Chris, are you seeing it?
What information, what information are you trying to pull up, Treasure Bennett?
Well, I was trying to show up, I was trying to show you the actual document itself, but I have opened my screen, but apparently, I'm doing something wrong. I had it set a little bit this season, but I don't have it going. So, the capital improvement document is a very large document. It breaks it down, it breaks down on our needs by fiscal year, it breaks it down by funds, and then it also breaks it down by sources. This document is something that we, it's a working document, it's only here that it's a six-year plan, so that we can plan, like I just discussed. The year that we locked in, as we discussed, like at our May 18 budget meeting, when we looked at water rates, and we talked about street projects, and how much we were going to try to get done, and all of that stuff, and then it's always changing, because projects change, timelines change, things like that. So each year, as part of the budget process, we lay out this capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan is typically approved at the same time of the budget, and basically, what it does is it locks in that one year of, well, the six-year plan, and then we amend it as we go forward through budget amendments and through the actual budget. So that's a real quick overview. Again, it is, again, all of our documentation on our budgets are, capital improvement plan is located on the Cline website, under the City Chargers, and then it's the 21 through 26 plan.
Very good. Anything else you'd like to share, Treasure Bennett?
I don't have anything else. If there's specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good. Any questions from members of the dais? Mr. Seal?
Thank you, Joe, for the edification of the audience. What's the price tag on an item to make it qualify for the capital improvement plan?
So anything that goes in the capital improvement plan, we typically have, it is over $5,000 plan, the bigger ticket items, obviously, are multi-year, and it's really unofficial to put it in the CIP.
Any additional questions from the dais? Any questions from those participating remotely? Treasure Bennett, thank you very much, appreciate your time this evening. I'll also note, note for the, for the record, my apologies, but in the absence of Chief Hart, Deputy Chief Marlene Ratzek is also participating in attendance in tonight's meeting. Proceed now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda would normally be adopted without, I'm sorry? I'm sorry, I didn't see a hand on the screen. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you very much. Ms. Bennett, just very quickly, so I have a mind, I have one that is identified about project, in case somebody asks a question. And an easy one would be, you're only on your screen, it's on the first page, I think, where it says cemetery, and it says project to be determined. Where is that data, if somebody were to ask?
So, on the very first page, so projects to be determined, the cemetery has, cemetery is very needy, because it has a perpetual care fund, and there's money that's allowed there to come into the capital improvements. So that money is set aside from the sale of some material, and the, very old needs, and stuff like that. That money is set aside in a totally separate bank account with everything else, and so those projects are determined, are usually determined by the City Council or anything like that. So at this time, if there's, the money's just there, there isn't a specific project. Once the project is satisfied, people will document it in the plan, and let that project score.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I just want people to understand that we don't just earmark money and decide later what to do next.
Only the cemetery money is earmarked, but that's private.
Right. It's on the first page, and it's like literally the first thing you see, and so I didn't want people to think that that's how this is allowed, so, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Treasure Bennett? Then we'll transition to consent agenda. Thank you, Mickey Joe. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. I've heard the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be moved from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Gearball, seconded by Seal to approve. There are no additional comments. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have the motion, carries unanimously. We move to unfinished business item 20-115, drainage solution for 491 East Look. Let's begin this evening with a simple motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 14, 2020 memo from City Engineer Fordice. Motion to acknowledge receipt?
Motion.
Moved by Del Orco, is there a second? Seconded by Kamara Sulaq. DPW Director Fordice, the floor is yours to go over your memo of July the 14th, and then I, I believe there might be some comments from Attorney Swets as well.
Thank you. This is a memo that is the same memo we discussed two meetings ago, basically describes the basic drainage problem there, and then there are some attachments to that, showing the proposed solution and a cost estimate for that solution. New materials, this one, you'll see, property map with some paint shading on it. The first one of those is labeled the original drainage district, and these are the lots whose rear yard drainage was by design to, the one exists in catch basin there, which is a little, a little dot on that attachment. It is that rear yard drainage area that has become non-functional over the years, there are nice, big, and fences, and sheds, and other yard uses. So the proposed catch basin would collect drainage from the property shown in the next attachment, which is the same map of a smaller shaded area. So those lots would be the ones that drain to the proposed catch basin. And then, we were talking at the last meeting, the concept of especially assessing costs for this, so there's, I think, two, maybe two schools of thought, and maybe Attorney Swets will add to that. So these properties here, they're into the proposed basin, they are, I think, the ones that most directly benefit from the change, however, it's, you know, the whole district is what was supposed to work, and it isn't working anymore, so we're fixing the district, so that it, that it all works better. So hopefully, we'll be able to spread the cost across to a greater number of brokers, although Attorney Swets did talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Hang tight. Attorney Swets, is there anything that you would like to add before we open up for questions, comments from council members?
Sure. With your materials provided, a spreadsheet that shows the census that the city would go through, would like to be a special assessment taken for these improvements. Basically, the theory of special assessment is that a public project is intended primarily to benefit and value to, to particular properties, and because it essentially benefits those properties, the cost of the improvement can be taken and spread over the properties that are benefiting. Under the City Charter, there's a process to refer to that, which is on my spreadsheet. Key decisions that needs to be made at the outset, if the City Council would like to proceed with a special assessment, is to decide what properties to include in the district. So given the comment just made by City Engineer Fordice, I think that would, that would take a little bit of discussion to flesh out, what he was just explaining, to determine whether it's a smaller group of properties or a larger group that's truly benefited here. Normally, we would look at the properties that are ready to catch basin, to, to, to see the properties that are already benefited from the improvement. So you'll need to decide what properties to include in the district, you also need to, you know, be settled on plans that have been presented for the, for the, for the improvement. And then ultimately, we'd need to come up with a method to spread that cost amongst the benefited properties. And with a drainage cross project, normally, the benefits come in sort of with the amount of area that's being, that's being drained, so you could do it by size, area of the parcel, or since the parcels are relatively close together, size, you could probably do it on a per parcel basis here, we'll want some engineering input inside when the town comes to determine what's the fairer method to, to spread the cost over the parcels.
Thank you, Attorney Swets, and I'm not making a recommendation, I'm simply acknowledging this for the public's benefit and for my colleagues' benefit. There's nothing particularly problematic, however, about not special assessing and utilizing fund balance dollars to cover the cost of this project, is that correct?
Yeah, as long as, as long as, as long as it's a term that the city's public's operating system, there's no problem using other dollars that are available for the city, the assessment should just one, one method of raising funds, and one of which I don't believe has been utilized since the time of the city.
I believe that's correct. Thank you. Mr. Fordice, before we open it up for questions, anything more that you would like to add? Did you want to comment on the scope or the geography that you think ought to be covered if a, if a special assessment option is utilized?
There's no ordinance that we have to follow in determining who technically is benefited from it. My goal is that the district is benefiting from this, and certainly those downstream properties will have somewhat less water flowing towards them, because it's getting interrupted halfway by this catch basin, so I think an argument can be made that the whole district is benefiting from the water.
Very good. Thank you for the comments. We'll begin with questions from those in attendance this evening. Any questions for Mr. Fordice or Attorney Swets? Begin with Councilmember Del Orco.
Good evening, Roger, this is Jim Del Orco. My only concern with using a fund balance to pay for this project is, are we going to be opening ourselves up to expectations from other areas in the city to make similar concessions and improvements where we have other drainage problems elsewhere in town?
Yeah, I think, I think legally, the city is entitled to kind of address these things on a case-by-case basis, however, I do believe, you know, it's good policy to be rather consistent in how you handle these projects. I believe City Engineer Fordice has said that there have been some projects in the past where the city has, has, has paid the cost of general funds to the city, although there may be some strategic factors, but I think, I think a good policy would probably dictate coming up with a consistent way to approach these that the city would follow, you know, as normally is possible.
Okay. And Mr. Fordice, as I recall, as this was presented during our last meeting, that special assessment wasn't part of it, it was more couched as a public solution to be funded by the city. Is there a reason why you're moving in the direction of a special assessment, or are you recommending a special assessment? I just want to know where you are on this, and how we should think about it.
So, my thought was similar to projects that we've done in the past, both that I'm thinking of the Canterbury Park area, prior to my time with the city, the middle of the drainage area, and the city paid to put a swale in there to divert drainage from some of the Canterbury Drive residences, and then in the fall of the project, we installed some inlets and under drainage in that same swale to improve the performance and drive up some of the lower rear yards of the Canterbury, and then additionally required the even private property to extend that swale further. Additional Canterbury Park, or Canterbury Drive residences, in the north of the park. So kind of following in that model, with this project, I was looking at this as, there's, you know, one, a small number of properties that are suffering the, the accidents of the drainage system, so generally, it can be joined on individual lot. It is a private issue because it was caused by multiple older properties, and was part of a, an existing drainage pattern that was set by a site plan. That was what maybe might be moved towards the public solution.
Thank you, Mr. Fordice.
Additional questions from the dais? Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had asked Mr. Fordice a couple of questions earlier today, and one of the questions was, how many areas in the city might this same situation exist? Do you have an approximate answer, Mr. Fordice?
I really don't. I would say there certainly are other areas, and the storm system does not have a funding stream, you know, our water drainage system, our sanitary drainage system, they have dedicated efforts to fund their maintenance and repair. Storm system does not have it. Few communities have created those, there's, you know, lawsuits are happening, hopeless legislation, enabling communities to create smaller facilities, more reliable, without challenges in the future. So, that is one of the reasons that our storm system is somewhat under the pain, because it is not funded, essentially. So, there are other areas in the city, particularly rear yards, where, you know, an older neighborhood backs up to a newer neighborhood, and it was not addressed perfectly in the site plan process, or if it hasn't been maintained, or, you know, there's a site plan process, or maybe it hasn't been maintained, or, you know, there's a, a need that there, that most homeowners aren't aware of, and, and haven't been changed. So I do not have a count, but there certainly are areas on private property throughout the city where there are drainage issues. You know, how many of those would rise to a, a public solution? That is, that is a question as well.
Sure. I guess my other question is, maybe not for you in particular, Mr. Fordice, I guess it's more of a philosophical question for council. Do we need to do this now, or can it be done next season where it is a budgeted cost? You know, we're, we're going to look at assessing, assessing can be for whole or part of the project, but I'd be interested in, in hearing council members' thoughts on that.
Very good. Additional questions from the dea's? No? Questions from those participating remotely? Mr. Gearball?
Just clarification, responsibility. Roger, ultimately, these individual properties may changes to their, I guess they would call it a greater property, you want to just contribute it to making this issue a problem. In our perspective, when I look at this, Canterbury Park, because the primary one that Jeff was referring to was the biggest harm issue, majority of it was our problem, majority of it was correcting a earlier issue that wasn't corrected. But in this situation, it's clearly the property owners that have either built, distracted buildings that have caused runoff or whatever, and doesn't the law basically require that the individuals that contribute water or runoff onto another property have to resolve it?
Yeah, I believe, you know, to the extent that, that I understand the situation here, this is largely a private problem created amongst the property owners. I believe the easement that runs across the, the back of these properties is a private easement, not a city easement. So it, it is certainly a problem that is created by the property owners, in which they could seek relief from each other over a problem or under a recurring law. It probably also is a public health and safety concern. So I think, I think the city does not have to sort itself in this, but I think the city is entitled to, if the city believes this is a public health and safety concern, the city should, should try to solve.
One other question. In terms of funding for this or assessing it, the whole process, when we look at it, I mean, basically, we vote that they get a time period to appeal it, and then, and then they could eventually track, you know, what's the period of time that would anticipate that this whole project by assessing would take, I would say? Are we talking six months?
I, a lot of that depends just on, you know, practicalities of what happens, planning wise and so forth. But if everything is ready to go smoothly, it could be, uh, three or four city council meetings, and then with the property owners having thirty-five days after that, that they could, um, that they could file an appeal with tax regale if they wanted to. So I would think, you know, outside, you know, three months, you could have it done probably a little bit sooner.
And then just for clarification, for most of our, you know, recent developments, they've been under a homeowner's authority or something like that, or a kind of maybe a creative order. So most of those would basically have the responsibility to correct that issue, wouldn't they? Or are we responsible for it?
The situation where there's a homeowner's association or kind of any definitely adds a different dimension to the problem. Certainly, with kind of association, there would be presumably a first line of responsibility that would align with the association. It wouldn't preclude a public solution, but I think, you know, a, a problem fully contained within a kind of any association would expect the association to take care of. And the association itself would have the ability to, to assess its, its human donors for the cost of the solution, so there would be less, less need for the city. One of the problems that you face with a situation like this is without some kind of association and assessing power, you know, it's, it's difficult to, it's often difficult to get everybody to agree to go out and ask a solution, you know, with the, with the holdout, that kind of just, just refuse to participate in it. So if public participation with assessment district solved that problem, if that were around the city, we wanted to take.
Thank you. That answers my questions.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Gearball. Councilwoman Dillon, I believe you had questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. Gearball, just to come on my, my neighbor one. So Mr. Fordice, so it looks to be according to your diagram, ten properties in the, in the original nature.
Right.
And so you have an estimated cost of twenty-one thousand dollars for this project. So that would be theoretically, that would be shared from all those ten properties?
Yes. There's also a period of time too, I believe.
I'm sorry.
There's also a period of time that costs is divided.
Right, right. So is there a piece of that in which the city would, would have an obligation, or would all costs be associated with this? Meaning, like, are legal fees for, for doing this and any, you know, external, um, engineering or staff, you know, costs, is that part of this?
That's not part of, that's not part of my cost estimate. There aren't legal fees in there. There are design fees as inserted in costs, but there's no staff time or legal fees in that.
Okay. So I guess, then this, I guess we go to Mr. Swets. Does the primary property owner have any recourse on their own over the other properties?
Before I add, just to, just to add to what Mr. Fordice said to your previous question, if the city wanted to, you could certainly look to include legal fees within a, a cost that, that is charged over the district. And possibly an engineering piece as well, staff time is a little bit lesser served. You also would be, you would be able to spread this over and over years and have the property owners pay as the city back with interest over that time, or you could make a legally due of the city to front that cost over time. So as far as, as far as redress, um, you know, I'm, I'm only reacting to the facts as Mr. Fordice has kind of recounted to me. So assuming, you know, some of the things he said are true, like people building things that kind of block the flow of water and so forth, um, you know, what, what property owner could potentially assume another property owner, a pantry garage or whatever it is, blocking or redirecting the water flow and causing another property flood? That's, that's always a possibility, um, you know, for, for this situation that would be probably expensive and certainly would not be to, to need a repairment, but presumably somebody that's responsible for this is not, you know, the city to manage this problem.
Right. So I guess just installation, I, I'm just really struggling with the city putting a bill for this, um, when there are other parties involved to it. I would have to say that I would be most in favor of doing a special assessment based on the information that I have. And so I'm curious as to what others have to say about it. I, I'm very concerned that this would open up the window to other projects that are similar. I know that there are areas in, in the town, frankly, where I live, is, it has water drainage issues based on older neighborhood and newer neighborhood. And so I would be very concerned as to what the potential long-term cost could be to sit beyond this project.
Thank you. I can't see Councilmember Kamara Sulek, so I will ask, Mr. Kamara Sulek, do you have any questions or comments for staff or legal counsel?
Yes, I do. And so none of you can see me?
I can see you now. I can see you now.
Oh, okay. I, I haven't touched anything. But yes, I do have, I do have a few questions. Thank you. Does the city require permits for any second improvements, fences, sheds? I'm sure garage would fit into that category. So is that a question Mr. Fordice can answer, or maybe Mr. Green?
I, I get it, yeah. Yeah, we do require permits for everything like this, but in most cases, the, what we deal with, we get a site plan, we get whatever they want to build. And we review that to see if it meets our standards. But in most case, unless an easement is provided to us, we do not go search for that document. And then in regards to, in a similar situation, regardless of how it is decided, the city's not responsible if you build, I didn't respond. So if you submit us a plan and says it needs all of our separate requirements and everything like that, then you put it in the wrong place, that's on you.
Okay. So do we know if there are any, any specific improvements that have caused this drainage issue over, over time? Obviously, there's fences, I've gone by, I've gone by the property and looked from the street, and there's obviously plenty of fences, you know, and, and landscaping and growth. I'm concerned about, you know, the grading and, you know, what kind of responsibility do the neighbors have that put up these structures that are contributing to this problem? And say if it's the neighbor to the east of the property of 491, that it's not in, included in the potential special assessment district. That also slopes towards 491, I'm hopeful. So I'm concerned of making sure, you know, do we know what caused it all? And is there any way to search in the future for documents that, um, for these permits or sheds, fences, just so that we can have a better idea of how this happened and to prevent it from happening in the future? Because, you know, this, this, it's money and it's time and resources for us to figure out the, you know, the best solution for, for those homes there. So is, is there a way that first in the future for permits, when they're requested, that we can search documents to see if there is a, you know, an easement? Because in this case, it's a private easement. And now this is becoming, you know, this is become elevated to a city issue.
In my opinion, if you guys don't med, if you guys don't mind raising permits, I know we should do this. My only concern, because we are going to raise the cost of that, it does take a while to pull easements and review them to see if they make sense. The other thing that I worry about, actually, that's the biggest thing, it's just going to be time consuming and the cost that we're going to have, we're going to have to pass on to everyone else.
Maybe this doesn't come off enough. Maybe this is a one-off, but this is going to happen more as the city, you know, as the city ages and, you know, more mature neighbors are more prone to these type of issues.
Could I comment on that? A little bit? One of the, one of the contributing factors is landscaping, and we need not require any permits for landscaping unless you're, you know, building a retaining wall and giving something to the green. So something as simple as planting, you know, the little gift tree that your child brought home for an anniversary, fifteen years later, now the drainage is over. You know, so it's, um, so it's, you know, it's a good idea that we should add a comprehensive database of easements that we can easily check. And that would work out somehow, obviously, but there still would be issues for these kind of rear yard places where folks are not used to, need restrictions on a property.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure that we're, we're fair and everybody involved, because it looks like all ten of those parcels are going to be more, would be, you know, a, a factor or part, or part of this. Are special assessments typically like a ten-year time span? I mean, that makes larger dollars more, more palatable, but as, as we look into this, you know, the price tag is, you know, twenty-one thousand, it could easily, could easily be more. But looking at it as monthly payments over a ten-year period is definitely easier than a lump sum. So I'm, I'm in favor of that. But also, if we have a special assessment district, who is responsible? They are these homeowners that are responsible for maintaining? Like, what happens if there is another problem with, with the drainage? Granted, this could be totally, it would last years, ten, twenty, thirty years, never give a problem again. But just for the sake of argument, are they responsible then if a special assessment district is created?
I can, I can weigh in on that. First, your first question is the length of the assessment. Then it varies a lot between communities and between types of projects and the amount of cost. Well, it sounds like a lot of money, you know, this amount of money, if it's about ten properties, comparatively speaking, would be a somewhat small stuff. So I think, you know, you could do, you could do it in a shorter number of years, in ten, and that's sort of fair. So I think you can add assessments are limited to ten years. Some communities, they, they go out far, but you're limited to ten years. As to this, um, what would be, if I understand Mr. Fordice's proposal, is what would become part of the city's storm drainage system would be basically on the, on the drawing, as I was going to do for your previous meeting, with blue line on it? It would be that easement, drainage across the side of line 491, sort of collecting the water at the back and draining out to the, to the street. So that would be a relatively small area to maintain. Maintenance would be the city's responsibility, although if there were major costs involved, there could be a special assessment district to pay, to pay any major costs. But it's, it's just that small area, really, I think, as you proposed, to be part of a public system. So there certainly are possibilities of other things that would happen, considering the positive issues also, but I, I really can't predict what that would be.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I don't, I don't imagine it would be that, you know, that large or meet, you know, or, or maintenance or repair, but if it comes up in the future and what kind of precedent that this may set, I'm just looking at. So that's all the questions that I have at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Before I call a vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt, I do have a, I guess, a, a procedure question, which is probably best addressed by you, Attorney Swets. Assuming that the consensus is to specially assess, does the subsequent motion need to have verbiage indicating the area and properties subject to the special assessment? And does it also need to note whether payment would be required upfront or whether it would be accepted over a, a multi-year period?
I, I think the best way to begin the process would be, would be a motion to direct city staff to prepare a special assessment and to come back to the, to the city council with a, with a proposed resolution number one to start the process. Certainly, this guidance on the number of years would be helpful, although that could be decided at kind of a, a resolution. I think addressing the area of the assessment is probably primarily an engineering question that Engineer Fordice should probably work through as, as a staff matter, and the city council could express its opinions on that when we came to the resolution number one.
Let me read this to you. So a subsequent motion, if, if the majority was amenable, would be to direct staff to draft a special assessment agreement to resolve drainage issues along East Look Drive?
I mean, we could, to come to the council with, with a resolution, we begin the special assessment process. If they were ready to agree.
Say that one more time, Roger. I apologize.
It, it, it would probably be to bring a res, to prepare, bring a resolution to city councils to start the process. I, it, it would probably be to, to bring a res, to prepare and bring a resolution to city councils to start the process. Unless all the property owners will be agreeable to continue this by agreement, there won't be an agreement involved. Uh, I'm assuming with this many persons, that would be difficult. So I think this would be initiated by, by directing staff to prepare and bring a resolution to city councils to start the process.
Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, very good. Additional questions before I call for the motion? Uh, Mr. Del Orco.
Um, Roger, are, when we define these special assessments, is the amount of money paid by each property owner varied by how much square footage they have at the front of the lot or the back of the lot? I guess I was unclear of that when I read my packet.
That's one of the issues that I think we need to, to study further and determine. This is kind of a matter of engineering and science. So I would, um, I would want to speak more with, uh, City Engineer Fordice on what he thought the best method for measuring benefit would be. Certainly, square footage area of lots would be one way to do it. But we, we need to kind of look at that, you know, common with a fair way to reflect who's contributing the drainage. And it's a little bit complicated by the fact we're, we're draining some parcels, we're relieving a problem on others. So we need to study that further, maybe recommendation to you.
Is it, is it an option for us to ask in the assessment that everybody kicks in the same amount, like a flat fee for everyone? And maybe as a measure of good faith, the city could contribute something to the project? So everybody's got some skin in the game and it doesn't all fall on the city? And we don't kick up a hornet's nest with asking different property owners to pay different amounts? Is that an option?
Yeah, I think because of the, I think because of the nature of this, where some properties are contributing water, some are receiving, um, a per parcel assessment, it may make sense. So I do think that is a possibility. Uh, and just to be clear, this is not something we're going to ask the property owners to, to, to decide. This is something that we're going to decide, um, the city council will decide based on the recommendations from staff as to what is, what is the fairer benefit to use. And I think given the facts, that would be awesome.
Right, but I, they can appeal, so I'm just, I'm just wondering, what's the most harmonious way to approach this with this, with the, with the subdivision and the lot owners?
Well, I think, you know, I understand what you're saying. Um, but what, what our, what our, what our task is going to be is to come up with what's the fairness. Hopefully, what's the fairness laws within those termies, but, uh, we need to, uh, we need to look at what's the fairness benefit to distributing it. I do think per parcel may make sense here, but I need to investigate that a little further with Mr. Fordice.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Del Orco?
No, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Mitchell, I believe you had a question?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, one of the things I want to point out is that in driving by this area, um, it's obvious that the homeowner has increased the size of, of their driveway to a certain extent. And it's increasing the size of an impermeable surface. And so I, I wonder, so A, I wonder if permits for driveways, I'm sure it's limited to a certain thing. But it, it's interesting to expand the impermeable surface on your property and then say, oh, by the way, we have a drainage issue. So that, that also tilts my, my thought to, to do the special assessment. I, I'd be amenable to looking at the city contributing some because we approved permits. And I, I guess I'd like to look at that sometime as a root cause issue. If we're issuing permits and not looking at drainage issues, is that going to hurt us in the long term? Thank you.
Anything else before I call the motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 14th memo? Now that I'll call for a vote, it's been properly moved by Del Orco, seconded by Camaro Sulek to approve, acknowledge receipt of the July 14th, 2020 memo from City Engineer Fordice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have the motion, carries unanimously. Uh, okay, trying to, I, I've tried my best to sort of gauge the pulse of council here. Uh, Roger, let me read this back to you one more time to, to determine whether you deem this is appropriate and then council can consider this motion or, uh, any of the verbiage that was enumerated in the agenda in advance of tonight's meeting. So what I have is to direct staff to draft a resolution to begin the process of special assessment to resolve drainage issues along East Look Drive. What's your pleasure, my friends?
I want to make that motion.
Okay, then Mr. Seo's going to make the motion to direct staff to draft a resolution to begin the process of special assessment to resolve drainage issues along East Look Drive. Is there a second to that motion?
Excuse me, Mayor, but what are we, what are we doing with the rest of the original motion?
Oh, we are not entertaining that at this time. I have to, I actually can't address that until I get a second on this motion. Was there a second to Mr. Seo's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gearvall. So it was moved by Seo, seconded by Gearvall. So we have entertained separate motion as opposed to what was enumerated on the agenda in advance of tonight's meeting, Councilwoman Dillon.
So then are we, because there were three pieces to it. There was an acknowledgement, then there was an approved, not approved, of the recommendation to install. So are we voting on that or is that not incorporated into this paperwork?
No, we would need to vote on that separate if, if a majority of council wanted to, to consider that motion as well. The only thing that this motion that's on the floor does is direct staff to draft a resolution to come back to us for consideration. And hopefully that will be done on September the 14th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, discussion on the motion. Let me just say, I, I will, I will vote in favor of the motion, but much like my council colleague, Mr. Del Orco, uh, I would like to see the city have some skin in the game on this. Uh, I would also note from the inquiries that my office has, uh, has received, uh, this is a priority for many people along East Look Drive. And so assuming that we're able to consider, consider something tangible on September the 14th, I hope that we would be able to, uh, to, uh, approve a, a plan and move expeditiously to, uh, resolve drainage issues in the rear of, of several lots along East Look Drive. I, I don't, I don't really have sympathy for the residents along East Look Drive. I have empathy because I experienced significant water drainage issues in my backyard. And I know that how that can adversely affect your, our, your quality of life. And so, um, I'm very sympathetic to the notion that we should move aggressively to resolve these issues. Uh, additional discussion on the motion. I believe I have a hand up from Mr. Gearvall.
Um, I'm in favor of assessing the dollar, which we propose. Um, Mr. Fordice was significant enough to do, uh, identifying this problem, evaluating and assessing it, which would not necessarily happen into private individuals and individuals. Again, this is a concern, it's a private matter, it's an eligible property. Um, if we're really concerned about how we spend our money, I'm more worried about issues that we may have on public properties or parts or areas that we need to resolve. And so at this point, I think we've already contributed our significant portion for this and it would just move forward with the dollar that it's always recommended or the actual amount that we need to, or we're going to get this done. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Gearvall. Mr. Fordice, a quick question for you. You, uh, I assume that working with staff and legal counsel, you could draft the necessary documents and have, uh, any other ancillary materials available for us so we could act on this at our next meeting, which is September the 14th? That gives you a month.
I had a little trouble hearing you there.
Uh, so assuming this motion passes, uh, I assume that council could, uh, review a draft resolution at our next meeting on September the 14th? That gives you a month?
Yes, yeah, we can do that.
Very good. Mr. Seo, additional comments?
Yes, Your Honor. Um, I would only say that, given the fact that lots generally slope two ways. Uh, the front lot usually, the front of the lot usually slopes toward the street, the rear of the lot slopes towards the rear. Um, depending on course and what the site plan looked like originally. But it's not always the entire square footage of a lot that would contribute to the problem. So I guess I would think that the easiest way to do this, uh, without getting too nitpicky about, you know, this guy is paying more than me or whatever, would be a per lot assessment.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Del Orco.
I just have one quick question for Mr. Fordice. Uh, it looks like the majority of the cost for this project is coming from the material for the installation of the 12-inch pipe. Is a 12-inch pipe required to resolve the storm drainage issue in the, that's pulling in the back lot? Or is that like a spec we can't go beneath? It doesn't seem like we, we would need that big of a pipe to solve this issue.
Well, it's just basically a minimum size storm pipe. Uh, so under, you're right, under warmer conditions, uh, you would not need a pipe that large. But, um, with an intense rainfall, uh, and the volume, you're doing that, or it's just probably the right size. Um, and it is, like I said, it is kind of the minimum size storm pipe, uh, for public storms.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any additional comments? Discussion on the motion. Everyone clear on the motion that's been moved by Seo, seconded by Gearvall? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have the motion, carries unanimously. Attorney Swetts, Mr. Fordice, thank you very much. If there's nothing further on this issue, we'll proceed to new business.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Your Honor.
Please.
Was there, I couldn't tell if that was a yea or a nay from the online folks.
I believe that everyone voted yes, is that correct? Were there any nays from the three participating remotely? And the motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to new business item 20 dash 130, uh, annual MML liability and property pool insurance renewal. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 17th, 2020 memo from Administrative Assistant Guestman and to approve or not to approve the renewal premium in the amount of $161,003 for a, for the 2020, 2021 period.
Who can acknowledge and approve?
Thank you, Mayor Porten. Gearvall, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Um, interim City Manager Green, would you like to begin? And I would acknowledge for the benefit of those participating remotely that we do have our, do have a guest from MML present who may, uh, may, may make some additional comments, uh, at the conclusion of Mr. Green's remarks. So, Mr. Green, the floor is yours.
Yeah, this is just the only thing that's the answer to the order for a to keep our turn. As you noted, we do have Ms. Judy from MML here to answer questions. We also have Ms. Guestman online to answer any questions if you have some questions specifically for staff. So I'll turn it over to her.
Let's turn it over to our guest. Do you care to make any statements this evening? If you wouldn't mind, uh, approaching the podium, that would be great. We welcome you here, it's always good to see you.
Thank you. I'm here to answer questions, so if you have any questions at all, feel free.
Yeah, very good. Before we open up for questions, uh, Ms. Guestman, I know you're on the line, do you care to make any additional comments?
No.
Okay, very good. We have three people available for questions. Uh, let's begin with any questions from the deans. No questions from the deans. Uh, questions from those participating remotely, I can see Dillon and Gearvall. Mr. Camaro Sulek, do you have any questions?
No questions.
I think, I see a hand up from both, uh, Gearvall and Dillon. So we'll start with Mayor Porten, Gearvall.
Um, actually, this is a question for, uh, Mr. Green. I see we've increased the number of vehicles from a fleet of 59. Um, at one point we were starting to get rid of some of our lease cars and things, but, um, is this just new items that we purchased for DBW? Or, because I know the car is expensive to insure.
Yeah, overall, it's because we keep purchasing new cars, we're not really taking any auto service officially. Um, that's something we'll look at, explore, uh, that's pretty much why.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Dillon, questions?
That was actually my exact question, was that I noticed that we have an increase and I wasn't sure whether we were looking at taking some of our vehicles out of the service at some points and what that timeframe is.
Yeah, I don't know necessarily the timeframe that's not going to work out most likely with DBW, but for some of these vehicles, it's try to, try to get as much out of them as you can before taking them offline. So what votes for that? But, yeah, we're not, we're not surprised we saw the cars go off.
Okay, thank you very much.
If there are no additional questions, is there any discussion on the motion? No, we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearvall, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have the motion, carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, we move on to new business item 20 dash 131, water assistance program. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the opt-in to the state of Michigan's water assistance program and to approve a 25% water and sewer discount to re, to be redistributed funds permitting, uh, on, uh, for eligible residents.
Who approve?
Moved by Seo, seconded, was that Gearvall?
Yes.
Thank you. To approve. Uh, Treasure Bennett, do you care to make any comments?
Yes, so just briefly, this is a, um, a program that is being offered as part of the relief for the, um, residents that are on a food eligible assistance program. So if we could be opting in the program, would allow us to partner with the, um, community protection provider and Michigan, um, Department of Health and Human Services to, to figure out how many of our residents would be allowed. Would, if we acted in, it would allow $700 for water and $700 for sewer. Um, that is current, that is in arrears from March until December of this year. Um, they would provide us the money with a 25% discount of those, for those only that are eligible. And then if funds were permitted out of the grant funds, then that 25% would also be reimbursed. So potentially, there would be no loss or impact on the city. But there is a potential that if the funds aren't available, that we would not get the 25% discount. And we have to make sure that we're not going to do any collections or any claims against those people. So, uh, at this time, it is our condition that we opt in so that we can see what the impact would be on, you know, what kind of effect we're looking at and be able to offer the services to our residents. It's our understanding that if we opt out of this at any time before we receive our first payment, so if we found a large number of ours and it's going to be a big heavy hit and we were getting the impression that 25% wasn't going to be reimbursed, then it would just automatically opt out. But it's our condition to start the program, um, get some, gather the information and move forward. Is there any questions?
Very good, thank you, Treasure Bennett. We'll begin with questions from the deans. Any questions from, uh, the deans for Treasure Bennett? Easy enough. Uh, any questions from those participating remotely? Uh, Councilwoman Dillon.
Thank you. Um, so just for clarification, if, so each household could get a $1,400, correct? So it's a seven and seven. And if the state of emergency is extended, this would automatically extend?
This specifically says that it's a 7/30 first deadline for the state of Florida.
Okay.
I would have to confirm that through the, because through the frequently asked questions, it says through the end of the state of emergency, but then it also says it's 7/30 first, so I think it's 7/30 first.
Well, that's because if that is the current state of emergency, so if we're being extended, then it would be extended by soon. Um, so I guess we would have to, I mean, my assumption is if we were going to go into this, you go into it with the assumption that you are not going to get those fees back. Um, it's part of a very big district, including Detroit. Um, I mean, I'm not sure how much, it sounds like a really large amount of money available. But I think when we start giving it up, it may not be. So I think that, you know, the city has to be willing to accept that this may just be a write-off amount. And can you elaborate it all onto estimates based on, I know that, I think you provided some sort of rough estimate.
So we, so this arrears would be our current, um, bills right now that we, that we just built out from general liquid. And if we took every single one of our, that are, that didn't pay on the due date, um, knowing that we're not, uh, you know, food assistance eligible, um, people, we would, um, I think, I think I figured it out at, our total cost would be 25, not even 25,000, if every single person that didn't pay this quarter didn't pay for the next three. That's why we put the $25,000 in here, because we really feel that, that it would, that's going to cover that amount. That's taking the current arrears, multiplying it by three and assuming that everybody that didn't pay their bill was eligible. And we know that that's not the case.
Okay. And so if we were not to be reimbursed, where would this potentially, this $25,000 come from?
It would have to come out of the water and sewer reserves.
Okay. Okay, that's what I was, that was going to be my next part, is if it taps on the water sewer, it's not going to fund us.
Right, it's more water sewer, that's why you have to approve it this time through the water.
Okay. Okay, um, I think that's all stopped, so thank you very much.
Additional questions for Mr. Bennett? Discussion on the motion, we've got one moved by, a motion moved by Seo, seconded by Gearvall. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I guess, um, I like the idea that we can offer citizens this program. Um, Ms. Bennett, how do you expect to reach out to folks and, and talk to people as, are you... Are you targeting folks who might have a balance in offering them, or is, are you just putting it through social media?
No, this is strictly going to be handled through the Department of Human Health Services. We do not, we do not, you know, we don't have an effective role in this, other than sharing our data. Everything will come from the community action agency, not through.
Alright, that's really helpful for me to know, I'll be supporting this, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Let me just say, let me just acknowledge the, the work and effort that was put in by the Treasurer's Office, I appreciate your, your initiative on this, Treasure Bennett. I just want to be very direct and emphatic, I understand that there is an inherent risk with, with programs, programs like this, but I think at times of challenge and hardship, it's imperative that we offer some sort of support for those, for those in need, especially those who are struggling economically. So, I enthusiastically endorse this program and will be voting in the affirmative. And with that, unless there's nothing further, there is a motion on the floor moved by CO, seconded by Gearbaw, to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item twenty dash one thirty-two, this is DPW HVAC control retrofit twenty twenty. This will be a motion to authorize or not authorize the third to sign the Campbell Mechanic Services project proposal in the amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars, utilizing fund balance carryover from the fiscal year twenty twenty budget. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Move to authorize, did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, was that a second by Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Treasure Bennett, I believe you're taking the lead on this, and I think, and I believe we also have a guest from DPW who's joining you.
Yes, so this is a budget item that was in the FY twenty, this is the FY twenty budget, that because of some negotiations during the time that we're getting this maintenance contract approved, and the COVID, the project wasn't able to go ahead. But it's, so this is one of the plans that we talked about during the budget process, that we would, you know, have this money roll forward and continue this. It is my understanding that this has been an ongoing issue with our Department of Public Works building. There has been a retro fix. The, the prior maintenance company had gave us a proposal, we put that down in the budget. Our mechanic Alex Linky was online and available for any technical questions, came up with a retro fit to get a steam cooling that is somehow manageable, but I understand that there are days walk in there, and it's ninety-five degrees, and then some days walk in there, and it's sixty degrees. So, the current heating and cooling item is operated by a thermostat maintenance contractor, so this is something that we need to move forward, and because it was a budget item that we moved into this budget, I just wanted to, you know, we have to order the contract to this, it's better.
Thank you. Foreman Link, are you on the, are on the meeting with us?
I believe so.
Very good, is there anything that you would like to add, sir?
She pretty much covered it, if anybody has some questions.
Excellent, thank you, Alex, hang tight, because there might be some questions for you. I'll begin with questions from the dais. Mr. Del Orco.
Alex, you mentioned in the memo, or someone did, that you feel that this is a more comprehensive solution than the previous quote, and that's interesting to me, because the previous quote was more expensive, so is there, is it just a better bang for the buck in terms of what we're getting from the contractor, or is there a change to the amount of work needed?
It is more of the same amount of work needed, but this contractor's a lot more transparent as to what needs to happen, and their proposal's much more complete than the last one.
Okay, very good, that's good news for a change, thank you.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Link, so much for being here. Can you talk about, so the other fit previously was a retro, what, what kind of lifespan are you thinking of after this is complete?
This one should last a lot longer than the first one. This is, they call it open controller, so anyone can work on it. Our last one was Johnson Controls only, so that should help. The lifespan is usually as long as the technology stays relevant. This one comes with a three-year software upgrades free, hopefully supported after that, it's tough with technology today.
Mm-hmm, no, I appreciate that, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, any additional questions from the dais? There appear to be none. Questions from those participating remotely? Councilwoman Dylan, and then Mayor Porten, Gearbaw.
Thank you, I need to have a couple of questions, and sort of to piggyback on what Ms. Mitchell said, just for clarification, so this is more technology, like software than hardware? It's a combination?
It's a combination, a lot of this is software, there's only about twelve actual hardware pieces, but a lot of it is software-based, and install all of those pieces.
So is this something that our IT department will oversee? Is it once it's set, it sort of runs on its own, and the company oversees it?
So, once it's in, they will train whoever we want to, to be able to access to adjust anything or whatnot, it's very simple. The sales guy wrote it down low, it's very, very simple to use, you get, it labels the rooms, tells you how hot they are, you can adjust it up or down, so it makes it very simple. And then Campbell, they will actually do an optimization every time, or once a year, I believe it's an maintenance contract with them.
Okay, is there a guarantee that this is going to resolve your problem?
They sound very good, I don't think there's a written guarantee, the, I'm talking to them, in the way they, their strategy works, sounds like it's going to work, I have full faith in them.
Okay, and I have a little last question, and I'm sorry, this is really, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer to it, I apologize. And is, this project initially bid out in the past?
Oh, it was not bid, and at the time, we were using Siemens as our maintenance, we had a maintenance contract with them, so we had them give us a goal, and that's right about when we, that their contract ran off, and we started doing all of the Campbell.
Okay, and so then, this agreement is now with Campbell, who's our new provider. Is there any concern, and like I said, this may have to go through Mr. Green, is there any concern that we are not bidding these out? It's not a huge dollar amount, but it's also not nominal? And I know that we, we really, like, tried to bid things out, and we got a bit sloppy about that lately, and I'm not sure, like, where we stand with that policy.
Yeah, I like that. For, for situations like this, when it is a very specific item, I'm completely comfortable going with the company we are currently under contract with, because they will also be the ones to maintain it for the next three years while we're under contract. So we'll work it out, and they, and we'll move it out, say someone came in fifteen thousand dollars for a bid, they put in a piece of equipment, and no one knows how to run it, and we're getting charged more by Campbell to fix it every kind of ways. So at least this way, since it is being able to do the installation, if there is something wrong with it, they are under contract with us to fix it.
I appreciate that answer, thank you very much.
Mr. Gearbaw, you still have questions, sir?
Yeah, just real quick, and a statement, the DPW building is a gift that keeps on giving, and I'm hoping, are there any other concerns with any of the equipment that's contributing to this problem, or is it just a question of a new controller, and balancing all the root rooms, and having it assessed so that the air conditioning is correct?
I believe this should take care of it. Right now, with the single thermostat, it's actually better than it was with the old controls, so I imagine this will take care of it, and it'll, it'll be good for here at all.
Thank you, Alex.
I apologize, Mr. Camaro Sulek, I cannot see you on the screen, so I cannot tell if you have questions or not, so I'll call on you.
Thank you, I do not have any questions, and if I've already been asked and answered, thank you.
Very good. Additional questions or comments from the dais, or from those participating remotely? No, we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaw, seconded by Mitchell, to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Alex, Mickey Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We move on to new business item twenty dash one thirty-three, Tetra Tech Wastewater Treatment Phase One Environmental Study, Adient Properties. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August twelfth, twenty twenty memo from Intrum City Manager Green, and to approve or not to approve Phase One Environmental Assessment in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by CO to acknowledge and to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Del Orco. Intrum Manager Green, do you care to comment?
Yeah, so about a month ago, City Council approved the Phase One Environmental Study for just our wastewater treatment plan. And that original proposal also included those two Adient properties, a little bit, two thirty-two and two thirty-seven in a row. The whole was by now, we would have a solid conversation, conversation with Adient, and been providing all those documents, and could have actually done our own assessment to see if that met our Phase One environmental goals, or that information we're trying to get. Fortunately, the first time I actually been able to talk to Adient was last Wednesday, and they are still working on providing that information. So, City Council, as I noted in the memo, City Council is seriously exploring those properties, not committing to actually building, but they're exploring the potential of that or expanding the wastewater treatment plan. It's just recommended that we do Phase One for those properties as well. And Tetra Tech's in this proposal where they will just, it's the original cost from that July twentieth meeting, they're just adding an additional eleven, eleven thousand five hundred dollars to knock out those other parts.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Green, and more importantly, thank you for your continued efforts to try and engage Adient. I know you left multiple messages with multiple individuals over the course of nearly a month, and we tried our best to engage, and they were not responsive, unfortunately. So hopefully, we can have a better relationship with them moving forward. I, I enthusiastically endorse this motion, and will be voting in, in the affirmative. In addition to exploring those parcels for future sites for wastewater treatment, equipment and technology, I think we owe it to our residents to know a little bit more about the scope of the contamination, so we can be stronger, better advocates for successful and expeditious cleanup of both of those sites. And I will note, similar to what I said about a month ago, I think that the eastern site is probably the more viable option for potential acquisition. It's our understanding that that was only used as, as surface parking for employees, and that there was non-industrial activity that took place on that parcel during the, the lifespan of universal diecast super ball bearing. But we won't know that until we complete a Phase One and likely a Phase Two. But this is an important first step, and I, like I said, I will be supporting this motion, voting in the affirmative. Are there questions for, for Mr. Green? First from the dais, no? Anybody participating remotely? Then we'll proceed to vote, and probably, I'm sorry.
Were we having discussions, sir?
If there is any discussion or no comment, so go ahead.
Okay, so, I disagree that we should be supporting this motion. I disagree on the basis that there are people at the dais and in this meeting that have been here longer than I, that have heard lots of presentations about how that property is terribly contaminated, and how the best protection is not to move earth. I've not heard substantial talk about expanding the wastewater treatment plant, I've heard it bandied about, I haven't had anybody bring it up strongly, it's something that they're interested in. I think this is a waste of money. I, I don't honestly understand, you know, we will get the information, we will have it, we will provide it to the public, but I don't see spending public money on something that is quite clear.
Well, I guess my question to that would be, how do you propose we gather the information, understand the scope of the contamination, unless we do a Phase One?
Well, we don't have to do that in conjunction with this project, there is no need to hurry, we will get the information, we can release information that we had two years ago. Those are all things that can be done, but we do know that the property is safe as long as the earth is not disturbed.
I don't think we know that, Jennifer.
I mean, I have some court documents.
I, I think that understanding the, the breadth and depth of the contamination, apart from the whole wastewater treatment issue, is imperative, if we're going to be good advocates for successful and complete remediation of that parcel. Mr. CO.
Thank you, Your Honor. Much as I said the last time we addressed this issue, I think it's very important that we move ahead with this Phase One, even on the Adient property, so that we can make an informed decision among the various sighting options that we have, about whether or not the Adient property is even viable, or future expansion, should we decide to go that way. And I think because we want to move this sighting issue along as quickly as possible, we need to understand exactly what our options are, have a firm footing on that basis, to make those decisions. That's why I'm supporting this.
Thank you, I, I personally have not seen many people who are jumping and bid to build across the street on the contaminated property, but I guess we'll see.
Additional discussion on the motion? Can I concede, it looked like anybody participating remotely cares to make additional comments?
Mrs. Dylan does.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dylan.
Thank you. I'm sorry to see the brat at this point today, because as you would recall, a month ago, I was the one that brought this discussion about why are we not spending the eleven thousand dollars at that point, and then just moving forward? We've had a struggle contacting Adient, and I didn't understand why we thought that was going to automatically change when we asked them for this information. I'm just a bit disappointed that we now lost a month's worth of time in trying to move forward in our decision-making. So I was in support of, of spending this money when it initially came up, and I will absolutely support it again now.
Thank you, I, I would just add to that, I think the genesis for trying to engage Adient was seeing if we could save money by having them provide documents that actually by, by statute they're required to provide. Unfortunately, that didn't transpire, but I'm pleased that staff made the effort to engage and, and continue our, our ongoing efforts to build and improve a relationship with an important entity in our community who's responsible for the remediation of a, of significant territory in the heart of our community, so, thank you for that. Additional discussion on the motion? We have a motion on the floor moved by CO, seconded by Del Orco, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, the motion carries six to one, thank you very much. We proceed to the discussion portion of tonight's agenda. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force reports from council members. Anybody have a Commission Committee or Task Force report on the dais? None on the dais, we'll transition to those participating remotely, Mr. Gearbaw, please.
Just updating on this management group, we've matched twice so far, and are proceeding. All the members are feeling, I think, pretty challenged by this, I think we're going to be moving forward. Number of the items we're looking at, doing the max, is to try and draw, how we're going to interview all the parties and the topics and things that we're going to look into. And Mrs. Champion, who's leading our group as a facilitator, has gone forward a process which we think we're going to be adopting, and we can do it fairly quickly, so just give you a update on that.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Gearbaw. Any additional committee, commission, or task force reports? Councilwoman Dylan.
Thank you, I have a couple. First, for the Census Committee, I just wanted to mention that the Celine was responding to this sort of law, but there are census takers actively in Celine right now, if they come to your door, you are obligated to speak with them, you cannot avoid them, they will keep coming back. And it is necessary, it is required, so please participate in the census. It is never too late to go online, and do the census, or participate by telephone. And then transitioning to the Parks Commission, the Parks Commission has continued to meet virtually for the last several months, and there's a lot of things actually going on. The annual Green Tunnel Order Program is currently going on right now, there are forty-six nominations for thirty-seven properties, and you can still nominate properties, the information is on the city's website, and there are seven nominations through September the seventh. Also, a lot of events that the RAC Center would do, or the Parks would do, are sort of kind of changing into different types of events due to COVID. Inside events are now going to be outdoor events, which is really cool. The one that is going to be coming up in October is a park or tree event, where... The one that is going to be coming up, um, in October is a park or tree event, um, where families can go park to park in sort of a drive-through trick-or-treating event. Um, there are going to be sign-ups for it. Um, it is by car, not by individual. Um, it's currently scheduled for Saturday, October seventeenth, from one thirty in the afternoon. Um, there is a rainy, um, of October twenty-fourth. Uh, the parks group is currently looking for people to host tables in it. If your business or organization, um, your club, group, whatever is interested, I urge them to reach out to the RAC Center to sponsor a table, um, as they've done in past sort of the Trick or Treat Trail events. And I think that's all I've got right now. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Additional committee commissioner task force reports? Okay, transitioning to reports or other announcements? None? I have four, actually. Um, so as a follow-up to a, a discussion item at our last meeting, uh, Mr. Green and I did meet with, uh, members of the advisory board for the Celine Lodging Group LLC, that's the hotel, uh, and we have invited Mr. Bill Wong, who's acting as the chair of the advisory, uh, group, um, that handles the day-to-day operations and decision-making for the hotel to our next council meeting on September the fourteenth. He will be in attendance to address questions and concerns and provide a community update. Um, in addition to the hotel, you would have received earlier today an email from my office pertaining to the Huntington Woods special, Huntington Woods Connected Sidewalk. It's been recommended that a special meeting be organized, uh, between the Intra City Manager and I. We will attempt to organize, um, the appropriate individuals this week and then disseminate some proposed dates to you, hopefully by the close of business on Friday. Um, this Friday, uh, my office is hosting a hybrid coffee hour from eight to nine-thirty in the morning. Uh, we will allow some people to assemble and join me here in council chambers. It'll also be live streamed on, uh, Facebook and we'll disseminate information so people can log in via Zoom as well. The primary topic of conversation will be the future of wastewater services and our sighting study, but of course, I'll be addressing a whole host of issues. So please feel free to attend and disseminate, uh, information about the coffee hour to anybody in appropriate. And then there will also be a press release issued hopefully by the close of business tomorrow. Uh, the Celine Police Department and my office is hosting a back-to-school event, uh, with Mickey's Dairy Twist next Thursday between two and four. Uh, any school-aged child in the Celine area, school district is welcome to come by, greet our police chief and new deputy police chief, and the first two scoops of ice cream will be on either myself or the, uh, the police department. So, uh, again, that is between two and four next Thursday at Mickey's Dairy Twist, and there will be a press release that is issued tomorrow, and my colleagues will receive a copy of that as a professional courtesy in advance of its distribution. Um, if there are no additional reports or announcements, let's transition then to the wastewater treatment, a wastewater treatment plant update. Mr. Weigowski, are you still with us?
Unfortunately, as noted in the memo, Mr. Weigowski is still on vacation, so he did not get a chance to hop on. So I did provide you some memo information you can provide before he left off for vacation. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to answer most of these, but if you do have some questions, you can let me know. I'll get away with CD tomorrow and get you guys any answers we have.
Can you give us an update sometime before the end of the week on the whole fence issue? I know he was supposed to gather some data and come back to present to see if we could develop. Go ahead.
It is, it is included in the memo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, well, let me look for that. Um, that was my faux pas. Um, let me open it up for questions. You may be able to answer them. If not, Mr. Green, please take note. You can relay them to, uh, to Mr. Weigowski and double back with council members before the end of this week. Are there questions from the dais? Questions, I'm sorry, Mr. Delarco.
Just briefly, um, about the, the sludge line, uh, part of the memo, I assume this is referring to the, the clarifier that was operational clarifier number one and not the one that was just rotted and repaired?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay.
And that's why I did that note, uh, when it cools down the fall, they plan to take it offline.
So they're just doing everything they did to clarify number two to clarify number one to be thorough?
Yeah, that's what will happen in, in the fall when it cools down, but the plan is to take that one offline fully, just like the last one was, except this one is more preventative than versus reactive.
Right, because it is operational right now.
Correct.
Okay, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Questions from those participating remotely? Uh, start with Mayor Portendier Ball.
Um, just to let you know, Mike, I have an individual, um, who'd like to contact me and let me know that the smell is an issue there. She mentioned that, um, it's been off and on, but I see worse today, so just a question.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Um, and Mike, I don't expect you to provide answers. I just wanted to make some comments. Um, I just require clarification since this is by the smell. We have three RBCs offline for a week, or is it four?
I believe it's only three.
Okay. Okay. Um, and if you could let us know when he expects for those to be back online? And then my other question was about the no filters because I always have to ask about the no filters. Um, I thought we were supposed to work on the no filters. Um, and this indicates that they were installing some panels. Is this something different? I know this was not part of the warranty, but is there any concern that it voids part of the warranty or?
Yeah, I'll check with CD. Uh, for these minor fixes, as CD mentioned, there's just minor screens and there's hundreds of them that need to be filled. I believe it was under the direction of PD people from Nova, uh, verified. I don't think you should void anything there.
Okay. And then my only last one is a comment of, I can just say that from my house over the weekend, the smell of bleach was almost a little overwhelming in our water.
Okay, agreed.
I do, yeah. CD did put me on that, uh, when they did fix it recently, so this definitely see my current knee. Uh, they did mix it a little higher than usual, but nothing went up for a hundred minutes. So it was just probably stronger than the people are used to, but we were still within our permit. So I believe they did crack the test, so I believe that's just what happened on that.
Mr. Camaro, so like, did you have questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Green, will the clarifier, uh, flushing and cleaning, that's, that'll be a process, uh, prac, best practices that it'll be done? On what, what kind of a basis? Is that, will that be done annually?
That's why I believe you see intention is to take at least one off each year, so essentially they're over eighty years.
Okay.
And then this year, since the one went down, they're just trying to get back on track. So I think it's only, I think it's, I believe it's going to be each fall, but at least one's going to go down for a couple weeks while they do some permanent maintenance.
All right. Can we make sure that it's more than an intention that he does it?
Yep.
Just so that we don't run into any more stenty problems of, of, of clarifier number one. And are you gonna, are we talking, are we going to discuss the fencing mast?
If you guys have.
I would discuss it, I would discuss it now if you have questions or comments because it's not enumerated anywhere else on the agenda.
Okay, because that's part of the, that's part of the memo. So I'm trying to remember where we left off because we, we gather the information about the fencing and all putting it out and then all cleaning out the, the area that's, uh, where there's a lot of fall and rush on the property. I don't know if that's, has that been done yet?
I don't believe so. I think one of the things that holding it up was if you guys were to decide if we're going to get a new fence out, because if we, no matter what, we gotta get cleaned up, but if we're going to get a new fence, might as well do that in conjunction with a location of dollars. So I think we're just waiting on it, right? So it's whether if we go with installing new, if we have to get new poles, we'll come back, we'll do it at once. If you decide no one needs a fence, then we just plan it separately to go clean up around the house.
Okay. Well, I support putting up the fence, uh, at least for Mrs. Arber's property, and then I'm thinking we don't know what the, you know, what the mayors, those immediately, uh, fronting on the wastewater treatment plant property will do. But we do know that while it is no small amount of money, those, those property owners have dealt with the site and the smell of the wastewater treatment plant for many, many years. So I will be supporting the fence going up, um, along there.
If, if I may, Mr. Green, uh, I'm not at a point where I can support a fence for just one property owner. I think, as I mentioned earlier, some sort of written communicate would need to be sent to all property owners who have bought the wastewater treatment plant, affording them the opportunity to chime in on this issue and request offense or provide insight as to whether they thought that would be beneficial. I think in the interim, if there's limbs and debris, uh, you know, uh, on a fence and it's in a state of ill repair, I, I see no reason why a work order can't be submitted to DPW or to wastewater treatment plant to get those, those issues resolved. But I, I think it would be very premature and wildly inappropriate to just put up a fence for one individual without making contact with other individuals and property owners who are affected by the, their proximity to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, let me, let me clarify. I was assuming that that's where we left off, that, I mean, we would contact the property owners, so by, by no means would I, um, suggest that we leave any of the other property owners out. I assume that that would be part of the process, so I, I agree with, with those steps in that that would be necessary to do before doing any, doing anything.
Yeah, and, and my recommendation would be some sort of written communicate would be sent to, to, to everybody, uh, whose, whose property belongs to wastewater treatment plant.
I agree with that.
Yeah, Mr. Seal.
With a date certain for the funds?
Yes, agreed. Did you catch that, Mr. Mr. Green? Give them some time, but with a date certain that they would need to be, need to respond to staff and provide insight.
Got it.
Additional comments on this matter from the dais? Everybody's comfortable with that? And in the interim, removing, uh, debris and limbs from the, the existing fence? Okay? Um, Ms. Mr. Gearball?
My comment is just going to be, I think the individuals want, uh, so we'll put up a new fence, so at this point, not that's starting to be a defense.
Uh, Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Um, I guess I just wanted a clarification. Has anybody spoken with Mrs. Arber's or about the type of fence she wants or the height? Because I mean, there were a lot of, like, loose ends, and I feel like we're sort of missing a bunch of steps. I had thought that Mr. Weigowski had actually contacted the other property owners to find out if they gave each other an interest. So I think we are definitely kind of got a few missed steps here that we need to kind of get to. Um, I do agree with Mayor that if there is down limbs, trees, whatever, on property that belongs to, um, to the city, that we do have a responsibility. I mean, I know it would be really nice to be able to get things together, but it's been quite a while, um, and it hasn't been done yet, and we don't have a permanent planned wastewater fence. So I think to, to let this issue go on in perpetuity is, is just truly made us, um, we need to be responsible to the city.
Let's do this, Mr. Green. Why don't you confirm with Mr. Weigowski what sort of communicate, if any, had gone out to adjacent property owners? Uh, if a communicate hasn't gone out, then we need to get a letter together with a date certain as to when they need to respond. In the interim, I think a work order needs to be submitted this week to DPW Wastewater to take a look at that fence and remove, remove dead limbs and debris, um, that are either on it or, or in some way obstructing the, the fence.
Got it. Okay.
Anything else on this issue? Okay, thank you all. Uh, Mr. Green, do you want to provide a brief update on downtown street closures?
Yeah, so as we continue with the downtown street closure, we continue to park businesses to see how they feel. Uh, in summary, the four restaurants on the south side, love it, uh, they wish this could happen year-round and stay as we ever. Unfortunately, everyone else is starting to voice their opinions a little more, and they are not, and they are keeping this going past October one. I don't know if we legally can, as this is permitted by the state, uh, so even if we did, I don't know if we could, uh, because everyone else has seen their business for a little bit, and this isn't even, the street closure is not affecting the COVID, even not affecting some of the people on North Side Street. And luckily, um, Rock Paper Scissors at least are taking advantage of the old farmer shop there, so they'll be opening a pop, a pop up shot there, hopefully by the end of this week to try to take advantage of some of those diners down there. So overall, it's a mixed bag. The restaurant downtown, over fifty, sixty percent of their business comes from outside of the village. Everyone else is kind of struggling, but they're willing to sacrifice a little bit to get everyone else through. Uh, as for parking, that's a big issue. Uh, I was hoping Chief was going to be able to navigate that a little bit while I was gone last week, unfortunately get more pressing issues to deal with. Uh, so I'll be working with DC, um, to evaluate this week and potentially take away some of those downtown parking spots that we should add. So we'll have to figure out that over the week.
Thank you, sir. Uh, questions from the dais? Questions for those participating remotely? Mr. Gearball?
Just statement, uh, accident jewelers as indicated, if it's concerned with parks based on, on their building and, um, society, you know, representing their, their concern was that they might use it for voting, they'd like to have it turned back to the children parking.
Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Um, I do have concerns about the issue that the parking spaces, um, ones in front of smoke gases, that do seem to be utilized as for tenant purposes, ones from dams, um, accidental jewelers and rock paper scissors seem to be vacant most of the time, all of the time, I would, I would, you know, say. Um, and those are lighting crucial down down for indoor parking, and I, I don't like that they just sit open and just walk into Celine, don't park here. It is how I view it. Um, the other thing that seems to be a bit of a, of a wondering is the little U-turn in front of salt. Um, there definitely seems to be customers of salt that are utilizing those spaces as parking while they're dining there versus sort of what they were intended for, which was the bar shop and the coffee shop and such. Um, maybe a PSA of some sort, um, Mike, maybe you and the police chief can do something that kind of show people how to work that and when you get in, how to get out, um, because now there's just people sort of hovering there. Um, there's also a loading zone on the side of penetration, on the side of salt that I think needs to be readdressed because it's a loading zone, and I don't think people understand that it doesn't mean that it's not the same as the, the tape act or perma salt service. So maybe some sort of different variation, change color of signs, just so people understand that there is parking there also, um, in the evenings. But, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Very good. Thank you, Mike. Uh, we'll proceed now to the second public comment period under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time and comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address to the record. We'll begin with citizen comments, um, uh, from those who are in attendance this evening.
Thank you. I was going to be done, but we started talking about, uh, water runoff. And since nineteen eighty, well, really seventy-something, Canterbury Park has had a lot of problems. I have a big satchel there full of paperwork. I have another suitcase at home. And it starts with, uh, a swale that didn't work, and then they, in eighty-nine, they put in another one. And missed, then there were four homes that were built on South Ann Arbor Street. There were many, uh, uh, comments and letters written by Mr. Grossman, our city attorney, on shells. Shell, uh, transportation of water, which is illegal. And one of the shells is that, there's the parcels. And, uh, in fact, there was a time when there was a stop order by Mr. Roblousky, who was fired, he was our building inspector, because, uh, the shells were not so advised to. So when you're talking about this East Look earlier in the meeting and who was going to pay for it, I'm wondering who I can, in fact, I received a letter from the city clerk saying every year they would like to know if there's concerns with Canterbury Park. Well, we had a small flood this spring, and Mr. Fodeis was kind enough to come. I sent pictures out, and the water coming down from the homes that are not complying to the ordinances, uh, was all on the playground equipment, and I gave him pictures, and he said possibly the drain behind my home is not big enough. Well, I would hope that I Well, I would hope that I don't, no one expects if they put a big one that I'll be paying for it. Because in the last 20 years, Mr. Shelton donated land to the city, and then the Harris Street goes down his property and into the park and is supposed to go to Willis Road. I'm hoping that someone is interested in all this legalese of shells and shell knot and eaves troughs that are not supposed to dump water on Canterbury Park, that someone would be interested in my, in going through my papers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hesse. Any additional comments from those in attendance this evening? No? Clerk Royal, did we receive any communicate's in advance of tonight's meeting?
Well, we've got some during the meeting.
Okay. Well, if they've indicated their desire to have those read during the second public comment period, please read them. And of course, as the clerk is reading comments, if you have additional comments or concerns, you're welcome to type them in under the chat icon at the bottom of your screen.
The first one I have is from Ryan Marion. He has, "The current bargaining unit has been rerouted into this tentative CBA by Mr. Swetson, the former city manager. Folks are scared that everything will go non-union. If we didn't accept this offer, that was not a negotiation, but the city flexing its ability to predetermine the results based on separation of the unit itself. This will have adverse effects on the city's services as a whole in the short and long term. There is now a vast majority that has no light at the end of the tunnel in the form of a pension or healthcare and retirement, which is expected to cost $250,000 at today's rates. Taking $15,000 and $18,000 from employees at this critical tipping point is unjustified and unfair. Please think about the permanent ramifications before you impose your will on good people for the purpose of saving pennies while you're spending dollars on frivolous expenditures as we are so, as we so commonly do." And then the other one, it was from Tran Longmore, and he wanted to know if there was going to be action after the closed session tonight.
Okay, were there any other additional comments submitted this evening?
One from Bernard Miller. He said that if his memory serves him correctly, was the Universal Dynast property once a US government Superfund cleanup site and the remediation was performed? If so, are not the certification documents currently possessed by the government?
Any other comments this evening? And if you'd like to comment, please type them in. We do appreciate all the comments this evening and those who attended or who viewed our meeting via Facebook or who logged in via Zoom. Clerk Royal, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears as though we will reconvene into regular session to adjourn, but I don't anticipate at this juncture any formal action being taken.
That's what I am seeing.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll proceed then to actually ask if there's any other business to come before Celine City Council this evening, and note that we do have upcoming meetings on September the 14th and September the 21st. If there is nothing further, then at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to convene into closed session for the purpose of discussing strategy connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. City Council will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of tonight's closed session. Is there a motion to convene into closed session? Moved by Seale. Is there a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. The clerk will please call the roll.
Member Seale?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Gearbox?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Adele Orco?
Yes.
And you, Har.
Yes. We are convened into closed session at 8:49 PM.